Good evening. We'll call our Budget and Finance Subcommittee to order. Mr. Malaney, the floor is yours. A quarterly update on the budget, and then we'll take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Before you have the quarterly budget for the six months ended, 12/31/2023, as of December 31, 2023, there were eight bi-weekly payments made to professional teaching staff, with 18 payments remaining for the majority of teachers. So at this time at the budget cycle, there should be approximately 69% of the budget available to get through the year. For academic classroom teachers, we've expended $12,949,075. We have a remaining budget balance of $31,348,939, which is 70.77% of the budgeted amount, which is higher than the 69% we'd be looking at. So we anticipate that we should have, even after we do the raises in February for the steps and levels, we should, or for the step raises, level raises, we should have sufficient funds to have some ability to shift funds from this line item to address areas that might be of concern later on in the year. For longevity, we currently have $83,800 left. As you recall, that was a pretty big increase in the longevity this year for contractual reasons. And we use the Remainer app that's not paid as longevity to pay out for those teachers who are retiring at the end of the year for the 30 days buyback of their sick time contractually. So that $83,000 would allow us to buy back approximately 5.25 teachers at retirement. For academic programs, again, we'd want approximately 69% of the budget available for remaining. We'll have 69.57. We've expended $8.6 million, and we have $19,746,790 remaining. So again, we'll have sufficient funds to get through the year in this line item as well. Longevity, $63,000. That would be funding for an additional four teachers approximately. For academic support, the instructional line pretty much follows the academic classroom teachers. There's currently 68.1% available. The substitute line and the summer line are also in there. So if you exclude those two line items, we're about 72%. So again, we're in good shape as far as the professional teaching staff. Most clerical administrators should have approximately 50% remaining at this point in time, based on 25 or 26 pay periods. As you can see, the clerical, the, most of the SLT superintendent assistants, superintendent directors, department heads are lower than that amount of money. You recall, the raises were not put in the budget for them this year, and we do have that $100,000 reserve at the bottom. So that should cover most of the shortfall in those individual line items. The principals, again, should have around 69% available, and there's 70.81. So overall, in academic support, we're in pretty good shape. I don't think we'll have much of an issue, especially with the surpluses that we should have in classroom teachers and academic programs. For non-academic support, again, for the most part, the clerical, we have 40, 40-week pay periods for some of these people, so there should be approximately 55% available. As you can see, for clerical, we're in good shape for that. The custodial, we should be 50%. We're right on target for that, and the maintenance. The attendance line item is, I've got a fair amount in it. We still don't have as many transportation monitors as we'd like, as we've budgeted for. And as you can see, the drivers, too, we have a significant amount of reserves left, and we're hoping to be able to get higher, some more drivers going forward. So we look, those two lines should give us somewhere between $350,000 and $500,000 surplus that we'll definitely be needing to go towards transportation for vendors, for those routes that we weren't able to do ourselves. So overall, the current expenditures for salaries is $36,323,678. We have $72,198,451, or 66.53%. And that will be definitely sufficient to get through the end of the year for all our contractual obligations, as well as those level increases with some monies that hopefully we can direct, maybe help out this year's budget for any deficits we might have, or looking to get things next year to take some pressure off of the following year's budget. I don't know if anybody has questions on the salary side?
Anybody at this point? Mr. Guttrow?
On the longevity, were you saying there was, there were issues? We were tight?
No, we increased it significantly. We had a big cut in it a couple of years ago. Contractually, that was one of the items that got the negotiations with the teachers finished. So there was a large increase in longevity. So we took care of that in the budget. So it was already covered, yes.
So that's covered.
Thank you.
Mrs. Perrios?
Thank you. I just had a question, and maybe my question sort of crosses over into the transportation line. So it might be kind of a, you may just tell me to hold my question, but about the transportation, attendance, and drivers. Is, is the transportation item on the other side, is that the outside vendors that we're paying?
Correct, yep.
Okay, so maybe I'm gonna wait, I'm gonna hold my question till after we discuss that part. Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, keep going, Jim.
All right, for the expenditure side, for academic expenses, of the $19.2 million, we've already expended $11,530,359, leaving a balance of $7.6 million. The only line item that, as of concern, as typically is, is the tuition line item. As you know, we really haven't gone up in that in four years. We've been very lucky, between the regular appropriation we get from the mayor and the city council, as well as the circuit breaker funding, it's been sufficient to cover it. But right now, I'm looking at probably about a $500,000 deficit in that line item going forward. I didn't put that in yet because that can change greatly. One placement, outside placement that we're not even aware of could really have a big impact on that line. So we're obviously watching that line very closely, and we'll monitor it, and we'll get back to you when and if we need any transfers. So for the academic expenses, I think we're in great shape. Non-academic expenses, we had a pretty significant increase in natural gas and electricity. We've been subsidizing those with other services, which we really can't anymore. We've increased those line items, so we're in very good shape as far as that goes. Getting to the transportation, as you can see, we have a $2.7 million budgeted amount. We've expended $1,985,957, with $801,000 remaining, or 28% of the budget. That's not going to be sufficient to get through the end of the year. There is some money in, in circuit break of, they partially reimburse us, but we'll be needing a transfer, and like I said, mostly we'll be requesting a transfer from the transportation line items, the aides, the attendants, as well as the drivers, to cover the shortfall in that line item. All the rest of the line items are in very good shape and solid. So again, the only two areas of concern that we can see so far going forward is going to be the special ed tuitions and the special ed transportation. But within the whole budget itself, I don't see there's a problem in covering all the expenses going forward. It just might require coming to you folks and asking for some transfers.
Okay, Mrs. Lebo?
Yeah, thank you. Can you tell me, when does the circuit breaker money come in, and what has it typically been in the past few years?
It comes in four times during the year. We've only gotten one in so far this year. They were kind of slow getting it out, and I don't know if that's part of the problem with the funding, the funds coming into the state or not. We typically get about $5.2 million, $5.2, $5.6 million. We're getting about $7.1 million this year, which has a component for transportation in it as well. So we've only had one payment received so far. There should be one coming in, if not already in by the end of December. They like to try and get it in by the end of January, but it hasn't hit our books yet. And then we'll get two more after that.
And do they typically come in before July 1st?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Perrios?
Thank you. All right, so do we, do we know for the transportation line, can that be further broken down as to which transportation vendors are going out of district and which ones we're using internally because we don't have enough drivers and attendance here? Is there a way to break that down, or is it?
I, I can do, because we have to keep a list of the, all the individuals who are being transported for state reporting, so we can get that information for you.
That would be great to know, because I'm just trying to figure out, because of our shortcomings on drivers and attendance, how much are we paying to outside vendors because of that specifically, not, you know, the, the outside vendors that we'd have anyway? Just to kind of see if there's a way to, you know, reallocate those funds toward trying to get our own drivers, just to kind of cover ourselves on that, so.
Now, we're working with our vendors, and we are in negotiations with our bus drivers right now. We do have substantially, I mean, we've seen a decrease in our drivers. About five years ago, there were 10 more permanent drivers and 10 spear drivers, or field trip drivers. COVID hit, and it really decimated the ranks of drivers everywhere. If you look in the paper, you'll see every school district is facing the same issue right now, a lack of drivers.
Of course, yeah. I'd just love to see that amount that we are paying to outside vendors that we wouldn't have to if we had those, the drivers that you're talking about, so.
I can definitely get that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thanks.
She recognizes Mr. Guttrow.
Jim, the Governor's 9C cuts impacted a number of accounts that were already awarded, including extended learning time, dual enrollment, school-to-career connecting activities, student wellness, sport, advanced placement, and science programs, 21st Century Education Trust and STEM pipeline. Were we impacted in any of those?
Not significantly. Most of our funding comes through the entitlement grants. We do have a few of those small extended grants and everything, but the competitive grants, we don't seem to do too well on those. And they're all always pretty small, too. So none of those cuts will be affecting our current operations.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? Jim, thank you. I know that Mr. Guttrow just mentioned the 9C cuts. I've been on the phone with our legislators, and the January numbers were worse than, even after they lowered them, the revenue side. So we enjoyed a very big boost last year in local aid, which is this year, this current fiscal year. And it, it doesn't look pretty. I'm not suggesting there's gonna be cuts, but flat or a little bump at best. So we're just gonna be mindful of that as we begin our budget building season a couple of months out. So, yeah, I think if you could get for me, I know we don't want to bog us down tonight, but I'd like to get an update on school athletics, what we charge, how many kids pay, I'm looking for names or anything, and how many kids do we allow to play if they can't afford it, et cetera, et cetera. It's probably one of the last areas that we're still charging fees for, when you look at everything else that's going on in the world. So I certainly, I don't think it's been an impediment for people. It may be a discouragement, but I know the administration works out to make sure everybody's accommodated. But I'd love to get some of those stats when you get a chance.
We'll definitely have those for you.
Share it with everybody when you get it. Mrs. Lebo?
I think that's great, Mayor. I never had thought of it, but it's an equity issue.
Indeed.
It's definitely an equity issue, so I think that's a wonderful thing to take a look at. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Malaney. Whoops. Which one is that one? Put them both on. Is it working? Is the switch on?
I think she is.
Yeah, nice and loud into it.
So if we're talking about the user fee for sports, do you think the uniform extra? Because if we're looking at it, and I could be very wrong, but we have, we haven't used all of the uniform money for athletics. Are we planning on, could that be diverted to the user fee issue? Or not issue, idea? Or maybe I was, maybe I'll hold up.
You want to take a shot at that?
Well, the uniforms that inherit are contractual uniforms for different bargaining groups, like the nurses, the custodians, the maintenance. The uniforms for the athletics come out of the, there's one athletic supply line.
Sorry, that's my bad.
No worries.
All set?
Another thing is, for future budgets, if we're looking at the athletic supply line, that one looks to be a little short. And I know for some sports, there's actually not enough uniforms, like for track, there's like a lot of kids who do it. And then if essentially you don't, we don't, kids don't get cut in track, but there's like grays. And then once they're out of the grays, you have to wear like a white top. So just in, it would, it's kind of, it kind of stands you apart when we're first seeing the other schools. And like, some kids have the whites, like, most of us have the grays, but some people have the whites. Yeah.
Because we can get that information for all the athletic expenses as well.
Okay.
Oh, she was asking about the uniforms for the schools' individual sports, particularly the track programs, since there's such a large number of students. And the, all of the uniforms typically come from user fees. So we do have a breakdown. We try and be relatively fair, especially with the major sports, doing home and away, and alternating between the two schools. I know track is a combined one, so, and the uniforms aren't that expensive, but I haven't seen a request for uniforms for track for a while, but I can look at that.
Mrs. Hubley?
Thank you. And when you're getting the numbers for the athletics, also already currently in Budget and Finance, we have looking at middle school athletics fees. So we could have the numbers for the middle school athletics students as well, so we can tie that in with it. That would be great.
Can get that for you.
Anybody else? All set? Motion to approve the quarterly budget made by Mrs. Cahill, seconded by Mr. Guttrow. All those in favor? I oppose. The AIs have it. Thank you. We're adjourned.
Yeah, I'd like to call to order the, like to call to order the Wednesday, February 7th Policy Committee, the Quincy School Committee. There are three issues on the agenda. Mr. Clerk, if you could call the role. It's...
Mrs. Cahill.
First issue is the proposed school committee meeting calendar. I believe Ms. Owens provided us with an updated version. I don't know if there's a discussion about it. Laura, anything you want to add on that?
It's just basically the...
It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, for the next school year, the proposed dates, avoiding all holidays.
Any questions or comments? Motion, yep, by Mrs. Cahill, seconded by Mrs. Lebo. All in favor? Aye. That moves to the main school committee meeting. Second is the draft 2024-2025 school year calendar survey. Mayor Coe.
As you might recall, we had a robust discussion about this not that long ago. We had a lot of parents come to the open forum. Really was talking about the Lunar New Year, and we had some discussions about, though we did not vote to move forward to include it in the calendar at that point, we talked about revisiting this and starting with a survey with parents and families, too. So in, in the packet is a survey that Mrs. Owens, I think, developed. So any questions on that survey? Turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions on the survey, Mrs. Lebo?
Survey, so that we also had a line item in there that would say, delete Good Friday as a holiday.
Any discussion on that? Nope? Okay. We'll include that in the survey. Mrs. Cahill?
I have a question. I have something about the survey. We're gonna ask people for adding additional holidays when they're observed. I think we need to have something on there that states if we add additional holidays, that we're, our calendar's gonna change. We're either gonna start earlier, later, or have to adjust vacations. So people understand that. They might say, you know, I want X, X holiday, but not understanding they're gonna either stop before Labor Day or till June 30th, you know? So they have, we're gonna have to adjust something if we, if we bring in some extra holidays.
I think that makes sense. Mrs. Owens and I were talking about that earlier today. I think some language recognizing that if we do move for holidays, it will impact the calendar, vacations or the calendar.
Yeah, I think we have to be explicit. We have the vacation on there, with the idea that we may have to move it if we get on this road. But, and I think it should be right up, right up at the top somewhere.
I agree. Any, any other members have questions or comments about the survey?
No. And do, do we have to move this to?
Yes, Amy.
Yeah.
Oh, the dates of the holiday for the coming year? Is that what you mean?
They, they move, though.
But it does say for the 2024-2025 school year.
Yeah, it says that.
I think what that anticipates, if there was strong opinion that we take some more holidays, we put on the table, creating a March vacation during the other two, so we're not going through July for the school year.
I think, I think to Amy's point, though, we should put that it's gonna be two weeks to one week. Is that what we're gonna, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. It'll be two weeks cut down to one week.
Yeah, it's currently that.
If, if that was an option, right? So people would say they could vote, we're gonna replace February and April. Is that right?
They were just saying your mic was not. Could you just repeat that?
So I think, Amy, what you're asking, the February and April vacation, if we combine them, it would be a two week in March. But what it will, what we want to do, and we're gonna clarify, it'll be, February and April will be one week in March, because we'll need extra days if we're gonna add different holidays to the calendar. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so, so it would be, if we accommodated other holidays, we'd have to either start school before Labor Day potentially, and we can't run past the end of June. So that's where the, the question about merging the vacation, April and February vacations comes in.
And we're having an easy year this year with snow.
Exactly.
That plays into it as well.
Yeah, no, no question. Other comments on that? Yes, Mr. Begoli?
Yeah, just, how many of the holidays would we have to recognize and put into the calendar year before we made a change in terms of the vacations?
It would really depend on the year. I already had done a draft of next year's calendar, and it was very tight with the five days at the end, even though Labor Day is early because of where Christmas falls. You know, this, if we kept closed on Monday, the 23rd of December, you know, that adds a day. But that, and that gives families, rather than opening schools on the Monday, again, you know, these are things to talk about. It was very tight already.
Right. Don't we get credit for a half, a full day for a half day? Don't we get credit for a full day for a half day?
Within reason, because Jim Malaney also calculates the number of hours that the students are in school, because there's hourly requirements along with the days. So we have to be, we have to be careful about that, too.
Okay, well, I think people have to understand if they, you know, choose all five, they want to acknowledge and have, put in the calendar, then there's have to be changes made.
If I might, Mr. Chairman. Keep in mind that we're just seeking information at this point.
Right, I know.
And then it'll come back to this body. And I think there'd be a lot more discussion before we move down. And some of those holidays, holy days, they move every year. Lunar New Year, the Jewish holiday, they're based on a liturgical calendar or a Chinese calendar, not on our calendar. So though you might have the date for this coming year, it, it does change. And then the option is, if it doesn't fall on a weekday, do we not put it in the calendar if we do recognize one of the holidays? So there's a lot to discuss going forward.
Sure is. You know, it does beg the question, should we have that, as I think Amy was saying, should, should there be a column on the left-hand side that says 2024 and the date that's there?
Yes.
I don't know if we could do that, recognizing that, you know...
But I think if you get on this road, you're not gonna do it just the one year.
No, no, you do it every year, but just saying, for example, you know, just so that they have an understanding if it's in September, if it's in March, whatever the case may be, just so that they have an understanding as to where they're sprinkled throughout the calendar. And then we can assess, at least the public then has a sense as to when that date might fall.
That's fair.
And when we get it, we can discuss the feedback from the survey, if we want to make any changes, if we want to have a further public hearing or anything like that. We could do that before we consider anything. Any final comments, questions?
I think it's complicated.
It is?
Oh, it's very complicated.
No, so what would the next step? We're gonna do the survey, and then, so once we get the survey results, we're gonna look at them, kind of see, you know, what, what we get back. And then we're gonna have to look at what makes sense moving forward. I, I feel like changing vacation dates and things like that can be, like the two weeks to the one week can be a complicated issue for, like statewide for different...
It will be.
It will be, because if we have teachers who have kids in, in a different school system, or Quincy people who work in a different system, and then we have one week here, and their kids are in school, we might have teachers who need to take time off to be with family. I don't know. I mean...
This would also trip negotiations, because it's gonna change the contract. So it is very complicated.
It's gonna be a complicated thing for that. But I don't know, I don't know if I would add that in there, that, you know, but...
Do we have the four pages now?
I don't know if I would add the week, two weeks to the one, I think is a big, huge, unless it was a state initiative where all the vacations were the same.
Yeah, we'd just make it clear that it would, okay.
What if we get?
The survey.
It's a survey.
Mrs. Perrios?
How would the survey be distributed to families and staff? So the survey link will be emailed out through Aspen, and then we'll share it on social media platforms as well, and I'll email it directly to the staff.
I'm thinking the Smore platform has been really good for, because I'm assuming a lot of these are gonna involve families that may not speak English as a first language, so that going out through the Smore platform might be really good for this.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I have a final question. So where it says, please select your school level of your position, does that mean if employed with Quincy Public Schools, is that what that means?
Yeah, so there would be...
Oh, for questions for staff?
Yeah, there'd be alternate version for the parents and the staff.
Yeah, okay. Can we, can we put QPS staff? Yep.
Sure.
Gotcha. All right. Any other final comments, thoughts? Yes, Amy?
Students can't answer the survey, or?
We can, we can. We did the last time. We did also send it out to the high, mostly to the high school students.
Uh, yeah, I think that would be good.
Yep.
Yeah.
I think that makes sense. Do you need anything else, Mrs. Owens?
Nope.
Do you need a, a vote as discussed, or are you...
I don't, I don't think so, because it's not actually a policy. So if you're comfortable with me making the changes, I can send the survey out probably by the end of the week.
Any objection?
Okay.
Okay, all good. Thank you. Third item, proposal revision to policy 2.4.5 Agenda Format. Mrs. Lebo?
Posing that we have a consent agenda put on our school committee agendas from now on, when I think about when we get a listing of 15 donations, which we've all read about, we know where they came from, we saw the stuff before we go out here, and the superintendent has to read each one of them individually. If we had a consent agenda, we could just approve those things. Also, something like the travel, student travel, we could have a consent agenda that would do those two things, instead of reading every one of those, because we have all read them before we get to this point. It doesn't mean you couldn't talk about something that was on the agenda. It wouldn't prohibit anybody from talking about it. It would just make that part of the meeting a little easier.
Stream.
Streamline it. It would streamline it. It's just when we've already read it, there really isn't a chance, necessary for him to read it to us again.
Discussion? Mrs. Hubley?
I was just gonna say, this is something they brought up at the Mass Association of School Committees, and it was recommended.
And there's nothing to preclude anybody from saying, I want to take item four out for further discussion?
No.
Mrs. Perrios?
Would you, would they still be listed on the agenda individually? Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Any additional comments or questions?
Does that meet legal requirements?
That's, yes, absolutely. This is something that, as Kathy said, Mass has recommended for us to follow.
Are we, are we also, I'm sorry, are we also adding the subcommittee, reports of subcommittees as part of a consent? What, because see, that... as part of a consent? Because, see, that, no, but I mean, okay, so that piece there. Okay.
Thanks, Charlie.
Okay.
Any further comments or questions? Do we need a vote on that?
Yes, the subcommittee needs to vote to move it to.
Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yep.
Mrs. Lebo, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion to adjourn. So move.
Call the regular school committee meeting Wednesday, February 7th to order, 6:30 p.m. So we have a roll call, attendance roll call first?
Pledge, pledge.
Pledge first? Pledge first. I knew that.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible and just as one.
We have one memoriam?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. If you could please keep in your thoughts and prayers of the family of Harold Crowley, who is a longtime, or was a longtime employee of the Quincy Public Schools, who passed away recently. Mr. Crowley was an employee of the Quincy Public Schools for 32 years as an elementary and middle school teacher at the Quincy Elementary School, Snug Harbor Community School, and Broad Meadows Middle School. Again, if you could keep Mr. Crowley and his family and your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Superintendent, roll call, please.
Mr. Begoli?
Present.
Mrs. Cahill?
Present.
Mr. Gatro?
Present.
Mrs. Hubley?
Present.
Mrs. Lebo?
Present.
Mrs. Pertios?
Present.
Maya Coke?
Present.
North Quincy High School Student Representative, Amy Tan? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll go to open forum. An opportunity for community input regarding the Quincy Public Schools. Community in this context is defined as a resident of the city of Quincy, a parent of a student who attends the Quincy Public Schools, or an employee of the Quincy Public Schools. Non-community persons not permitted to speak at open forum may submit written statements to the school committee. After giving his or her name and address, each speaker may make a presentation of no more than four minutes to the school committee. An individual may not exchange their time or yield to others. And interested parties may also submit written statements to QSCO Pen, QS Open Forum at quinsypublicschools.com. Do you want me to read the other, pursuant to open?
You do, yes, you do.
Want to read that? Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Is there anyone here for open forum? And I think, Mrs. Owens, you have a letter?
Dear school committee members, as you may know, the Snug Harbor Community School now has an active PTO board. Our mission statement in our newly adopted bylaws states, the Snug Harbor PTO is an organization that promotes a collaborative and supportive relationship between caregivers and educators that contributes to the educational, cultural, and social emotional development of each student. We are finally starting to try and bring things to Snug Harbor that other schools have access to. For example, we are bringing a scholastic book fair to Snug Harbor this March. Planning an event that will take place during the school day and involve a number of volunteers outside of staff has brought up some challenges. We know these challenges cannot be solved by our scholastic book fair this year, but maybe for the next school year. One major challenge and barrier to increasing our number of volunteers is the SAFIS, which is the fingerprinting. We understand that SAFIS is part of a statewide policy, so we know this cannot be changed, nor would we want it changed as it protects our students. However, we are asking for the school committee's help. There are two barriers that prevent caregivers from having SAFIS done. The first barrier of SAFIS is the cost. While $35 does not seem like a lot of money to several families, this is a difference of a meal on the table. Our PTO just discussed last night on how to support those who want to volunteer financially and agreed to approve reimbursement on a case-by-case basis. The second barrier is the location of where fingerprinting is done. The location does not only impact volunteers at Snug Harbor, but all schools across the city, as well as potential employees. We are asking that the committee explore the feasibility of bringing a center to Quincy, specifically where it would be public transit accessible. We understand this might not be possible since it is a state agency, so any other ideas of how to make SAFIS more physically accessible to those who want to volunteer would be appreciated. This also brings up another concern related to SAFIS. Through various discussions with either other PTOs or caregivers, there seems to be no clear line as to when a SAFIS needs to be done. We would like to see a district-wide transparent explanation. The state says, who may have direct and unmonitored contact with children. Some schools seem to have a different view on what that entails. As a PTO board, we have understood that to mean that we all need to have Cory and SAFIS regardless of the situation. Thank you in advance for any time and resources you can commit to this concern. The Snug Harbor PTO Board, Christina Duncan, President; Megan Bezwick, Vice President; Christina Del Tufo, Treasurer; and Laura Russell, Cares Representative.
Thank you. Next, the approval of the minutes from January 24th, 2024. Motion is approved. All approved? Good. Okay, thank you. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening again, everyone. Hope everyone is doing well. Our first item under the superintendent's report is student recognitions. As you may know, Project 351 is a statewide service organization that brings together eighth-grade students from every city and town in Massachusetts. On Saturday, January 13th, students participated in an in-person day of service project at different locations, which our students will talk about tonight. Congratulations to the Quincy Public Schools Project 351 ambassadors for 2024. And I'll name the ambassadors now, and then we'll have them come up individually to tell you about the program. First, at Broad Meadows, we have Gianna Beck. At Central Middle School, we have Naraya Da Silva. At Point Webster Middle School, we have Daphne Rodriguez Campos. At Southwest Middle School, we have Rory Ruthier. And at Atlantic, we have Nathan Wang. Congratulations to you all. So why don't we have Rory Ruthier, if you don't mind, go up to the microphone, and please tell us about the program.
When I went, is it on?
It should be. Can you just tap it?
When I went to the seminar on Saturday, I had a really good time, and I got to go to the specific charity of La Collaborativa. And I got to work in the food line, giving out like produce and such to poor families in the area. And when I was handing out mangoes to a mother and her child, I saw that the girl actually had a baby blanket, which was the same one that I had when I was a little girl. It was pink, and it had like really little unicorns and bows on it. And it made me feel a little emotional because I realized that not everybody will be able to like have the chances, even if we try. But with our work, we're able to like close the gap more between like poorer and like richer communities and make Quincy easier to live in. That was fun.
Great, thank you. Next, if we could hear from Daphne Rodriguez Campos.
Hi, I'm Daphne. I'm from Point Webster. And on Saturday, I met some really great people who I feel like I can carry on throughout all these years. And it was a really great experience. I got to go to the IBEW, and there was like different stations. I didn't get through all of them, but we made food kits, blankets for people, and like we wrote them little like well cards, like, oh, you got this, you know, like cute little cards. And we also, there was, the ones I didn't get to, I'm pretty sure it was like making like hygiene kits for people. And then also, there was, like, trying to remember the last one. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It's because I didn't get to it, so I'm like trying to remember it. There was one last one that I can't seem to remember, but it was a really like cool experience to go through, and I felt very privileged to be there. I got to make friends, and we talked about different experience and like the differences in our school. And we also talked about how like great it is to be able to make all the amazing things we made for people. And it was really awesome to know that we were able to make a difference, even if it was small, it was a difference.
Great, great job. Next is Naraya Da Silva.
Hi, my name is Naraya Da Silva, and I'm an eighth grader at Central Middle School. On January 13th, I began my ambassador journey from Project 351, and I got to meet so many different people with different diversity, who face different adversity, and who want to make a change and are empowered in our communities. So on that day, we got separated into different service groups, and I was in the Anne Frank Service Group. My group went to Cratos de Crayons, which is a nonprofit organization that deals with children's food and clothing insecurity. I got put into the sorting room, and we got to help so many different families and children that deal with clothing insecurity. And then it was sent to San Diego area, where other kids in the Project 351 Ambassador Group worked. So then, on that day, we helped 27,000 people and their families, and we supported them through our community service. And it was great to see that we could make a difference in just that one day by helping 27,000 people. And that's a lot of people. So then, yeah, I got to know so many new people, and I got to make new friends and be empowered by other students and other important people in our world, and hear from those who have a voice and have something to say to our community. So I'm really thankful that I got chosen to be the ambassador for my school, and thank you.
Great, thank you. Next is Gianna Beck.
Hi, I'm Gianna Beck. I go to Broad Meadows Middle School.
Okay. We'll get you in a break. Nathan, could you tell us about your project, Nathan Wang?
Hi, I'm Nathan Wang, and I'm from Atlantic Middle School. And on launch day of Project 351, I felt really privileged that I got to meet all these like new people that I felt really safe and secure around. And I just felt really good that I could be able to help people in need. And on that day, I got, I went to Cratos de Crayons to help package stuff for kids that are in need. And I went to the sorting facility, which helped like sort out the clothes for these little kids. And one experience that I remember is holding out like a piece, like a T-shirt. And I just felt kind of sad that kids this small couldn't have this basic necessity that people need every day in their lives. And I just felt a bit of joy and sadness that, first, they didn't have this, and second, that I could help them get the clothes that they need. But overall, I'm just very honored that I am an ambassador for Atlantic, and I get to help these people.
Great, thank you. Great job. And before we have the students come up to the podium and receive their certificate, I do want to recognize our dedicated principals who are here tonight to support our students. Point Webster Middle School Principal Christine Barrett. Atlantic Middle School Principal Eliza Schneller. Broad Meadows Middle School Principal Nicholas Ahern. Southwest Middle School Principal Courtney Mitchell. And Central Middle School Principal Richta Christophero. And Central Middle School Assistant Principal is here as well, Kathy Mahoney. So thank you all for your support. And would you like to?
I'm sorry, I didn't, no, we're good.
You're good? Okay, thank you. Would you come on up for your certificates, okay? Nathan, come on up, and we'll get a picture with the school committee, okay? Gianna, come on up, give you a certificate. Stay right up here. We'll get a picture. Naraya? There you go. You can hold that for the picture, okay? Daphne? And Rory. Congratulations, everybody. Okay.
Great job.
Congratulations.
We'll take a brief recess so families can leave if they'd like. All right, back to order. Superintendent's report, continue.
Great, thank you. Onto the next item, which is the student athlete recognition. North Quincy High School Senior Basketball Captain Ava Bryan scored her 1,000 career point last Tuesday in a win against Situate High School. Ava is the 11th basketball player in North Quincy High School history to reach this milestone. Congratulations to Ava on this amazing achievement. And of course, tonight, she's at basketball practice, so couldn't join us, so she's so dedicated. But we do look forward to recognizing Ava in the near future with other athletic recognitions that will come before this committee within the next couple of weeks or so. So again, congratulations to Ava on that great accomplishment, and of course, to her family. Next, on Friday, March 22nd, the Quincy High School Women's Athletic Hall of Fame will host the induction ceremony for this year's class at the Terrell Room at 7:00 p.m. Please contact Principal Christine Barrett at christinebarrett@quinsypublicschools.com for more information about this event. And thank you to Principal Barrett for all the work she does in putting this very important event together for our community. Next is congratulations to Quincy High School Choir students, William Caberoy, Matthew Hollitt, Deveraux Fuller, and Michael Romeo, and band students Anders Eschelman, Alvin Nicola, Owen Veith, Fanny Yang, and Justin Zhao for their participation in the Massachusetts Music Educators Association Eastern District Senior Festival. After undergoing a competitive audition process in November, these students were selected to perform with other top-ranking high school musicians. with other top-ranking high school musicians from over 30 school districts in eastern Massachusetts. Really impressive. The Senior District Festival took place at Milton High School on January 5th and 6th and ended with a concert that featured performances from the orchestra, concert band, jazz ensemble, and mixed chorus. Matthew Hollitz and Owen Veith were selected to perform at the upcoming MMEA All Music Festival at Symphony Hall in March. So congratulations to these students, very, very impressive. Next is registration for the 2024-2025 school year is underway for all grade levels. The online links for families to preregister are posted on the Quincy Public Schools website. Pre-registered families will be contacted by school secretaries and central registration to schedule registration appointments before and after the February break. With that, that concludes my superintendent's report. If there are any questions.
Thank you. Next, we have Old Business Update of School Committee Policy, Section 257, School Committee Staff Communications. This is up for discussion. Anyone?
Original proposal.
Ms., you're the, you're the vice chair. Mrs. Lebo is looking.
Oh, Mrs. Lebo.
Amendment, can't we? We can amend it, we don't have to pass this. So I would like to propose we make an amendment to add the word official into the top sentence. All official communication, the first paragraph, excuse me, all official communication or reports to the school committee as opposed to just all communications.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gatto. On the motion.
I am totally fine with voting for official on this because it is my understanding that we consulted legal and legal said that it doesn't matter if the words in there are not in there, it means exactly the same thing. Am I correct from superintendent? Okay, so I'm fine with that.
Any other discussion? So the, the motion is to vote, take a vote to amend the current policy? And then we'd have to send it to?
And then we vote again.
Then we vote right now.
Then can we vote again on the amendment?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
We vote on the amendment first.
So should we do a roll call vote for a change, the amended policy?
Okay, roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Begoli.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill.
Yes.
Mr. Gatto.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yes.
Mrs. Perdiros.
Yes.
And Mayakoke.
Yes.
All in favor. And now we'll vote on the policy itself to be adopted with, with the, with the motion to approve that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
On the motion.
On the motion.
So I just want to explain, I'm, I'm going to be voting no on the policy and I just, I don't want to be confusing because I just voted yes for the amendment. I, I think that the amended version makes it more clear that we can have, you know, unofficial interactions with staff, which I think is better than it was before, clearer. But I still do not agree with the, the feel of this policy makes it seem like we are not encouraging communication directly from the staff to us. And I, you know, as I said in my, at the last meeting, I really have concerns about us doing that. I always want to hear from staff. I don't really want to put any impediments in the way of that. So this adds, I don't really see why we had to change it from what it was before. So I'm not really in favor of this new language. So I'm going to be voting against this policy, even though the official, I do agree with if it does have to pass that way. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Any other? Mrs. Lebo.
I just want to remind folks that this was recommended by our attorneys and by the MASC that this be in our policy book. So I just want that on the, just want to remind folks of that.
Anyone else? Motion to, to vote?
Approved, yeah.
Roll, roll call vote.
Mr. Begoli.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill.
Yes.
Mr. Gatto.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yes.
Mrs. Perdiros.
No.
Mayakoke.
Yes.
Okay, policy is adopted. New Business. Chronic absenteeism. Presentation by Superintendent Mulvey, Mrs. Perkins, Ms. Papil, and Mr. Marani. Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. I'll be handing the presentation over to Mrs. Perkins shortly. I just wanted to recognize, obviously, the team. That'd be for you and other members of the SLT who helped put this presentation together. We understand, obviously, that chronic absenteeism is, is a, you know, major, major focus of this committee and myself and the SLT. Students cannot learn unless they're present, so it's extremely important to do everything we can do to make sure that our students get to school and to help students, in particular, students who have problems with attendance, to do as much as we possibly can to get them to school so that they can learn. Our goal here tonight is to present to you the data, of course, on chronic absenteeism, but also our, our movements to make efforts in making sure that our students are given every opportunity to get to school and, and the processes that we'll be putting in place for that. And in that, you'll see a superintendent's goal, a district goal, to help combat chronic absenteeism. The goal, as you see, is a SMARQ goal. It's, it's very measurable, it's rigorous, but also attainable. And so, you know, working together will hopefully make strides in improving absenteeism across this district. We know that this is a problem not only in this state but across the country following COVID. But obviously, our focus is here in Quincy in making efforts to improve our attendance here in Quincy. And myself and the SLT are committed to doing that with, of course, the support of this committee. So with that, if I could hand the presentation over to Mrs. Perkins, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Mulvey. So as the superintendent said, we have taken on the, you know, as a, as a goal for the district to lower and address chronic absenteeism. In addition to Quincy Public Schools, it's also a statewide initiative. And you may have seen the commercial with the Secretary of Education, Dr. Tutwiler. So the state is also taking this on as an, as an initiative. We are taking this on as an initiative. And as a result, our schools are also taking this on as an initiative. Oops. Why is this not going? No. There we go. Okay. Helps if it's on. So just to remind everyone, the definition of chronic absenteeism, so chronic absenteeism in Massachusetts is students who are missing at least 10% of the days enrolled. So at the end of the year, that would be 18 days. If the school year is 180, 10% of that would be the 18. It also, you know, comes into play for as long as you've been enrolled in the district. So meaning if you just enrolled last week, it's 10% of that time that you've been enrolled in, in the, in the school district. And it is regardless of the reason for absence. So although we do, you know, mark students excused or unexcused when there are medical things going on, all of it still counts towards chronic absenteeism. So as the superintendent mentioned at the beginning, being chronically absent can have a significant impact on a student's academic progress and their ability to access the variety of academic and non-academic supports that the schools provide. And I thought that this was a pretty interesting statistic that during the 22-23 school year, after the pandemic, almost one in four students in Massachusetts missed 18 or more days of school. So it's pretty, it's a pretty staggering statistic. So in order to address chronic absenteeism in Quincy, as the superintendent mentioned, we have taken this on as a district goal. And so for the 23-24 school year, we will all be participating and have been participating in a district-wide initiative to reduce chronic absenteeism. So I have two different numbers here and, and I will go on to talk a little bit about where these numbers came from. But we, we get targets for chronic absenteeism every year from the state. The targets actually just dropped today. So we actually just received them. They are actually lower than what I have here in this goal or we have here in this goal. So we have, we selected from a base, a 2% decrease in grades K to eight from a base of 14.9. And we'll talk about why we came to that number. And then a 3% decrease from a base of 26.2 in grades nine to 12. And some of the things that we are, have been tackling and will continue to tackle throughout the school year is asking all of our schools to implement a school-wide campaign that promotes attendance awareness for all students. So taking a positive approach. We would call that a tier one approach, something that all, all kids have access to that just talks about the importance of why it is important to be in school and that we want them here when they can be here. Early interventions for students who are beginning to show signs of chronic absenteeism. So we are monitoring our students and making sure that when we see dips in attendance, we know why. We know what's going on. And we are reaching out to families to try to support and help reengage that student in school. And then specific individual interventions for students who have the most trouble getting to school every day. And that could be things like, it could potentially be a referral for special education support, it could be counseling. There's lots of work with the attendance officer, which Mara will talk about. There's lots of, lots of different things that we do to try to reengage students who are really having trouble attending school. And then in addition, targeted interventions for identified subgroups of students struggling with attendance. So you'll see in our data, there are definitely subgroups of students that are struggling more than other students with attending school. And so we need to make sure that we're doing some extra things to help reengage those groups of students to help them get back to school. So looking at the data, so this is last year's data for chronic absenteeism. So this is broken down by subgroups. And so I'll talk a little bit about where I got that, that, the number for our goal for chronic absenteeism. So you'll see that down at the bottom, it says all students. So in 2022, our all-students rate for chronic absenteeism in grades K to eight was, was 17%. And actually, I should clarify that it's, it's technically one to eight because this doesn't kick in until you turn six. So it doesn't start until first grade typically. And so our, our one to six rate was 17%. Our target for 2023 was a goal of 16%. That's set by the state. We, in actuality, in 2023, dropped to 14.9%, which is really a, a great decrease for us and heading for sure in the right direction. And you can see, you know, although we have some work to do, almost every single subgroup did decrease in chronic absenteeism with the exception of the multirace, a non-Hispanic Latino was an area that we did not decrease. And this is, you know, the, one of those times where you want these numbers to go down. Usually, when we're talking about achievement, we want the numbers to go up. But in chronic absenteeism, we want the numbers to go down. So in looking at this, our target for this year is only, is less than a percentage point set by the state. As I said, we just got it today. But we really felt like, given that we decreased 2% last year, given the work that all of our schools are doing, we really feel confident that we could decrease our base by another 2% at least for this year. Hoping to exceed that, but at, at the very least, we can decrease by 2%. So for high school students, obviously, it's, it's definitely more of a concern at the high school level. So on, in 2022, our all-students chronically absent, absent rate was 30.9%. Our target, set by the state, was 29.3%. And our actual number was 26.2%. So we decreased 4.7% for all students, which is why we selected the number of 3% for our goal. We thought that was a reasonable, a reasonable goal. And again, the, the base or the new target, I think, was just about 2% set by the state that was released today. And so definitely more concerns at the high school level. And I think we talked about it as well during the SOA presentation that, you know, we have some subgroups that we are absolutely concerned about. And one of those subgroups is the Hispanic Latino subgroup. They are definitely trending in terms of chronic absenteeism more than the other subgroups. And so, you know, although we decreased the African-American black student chronically absent rate, it's still pretty high and we need to, to bring that down. So this is our preliminary data right now for school year 23-24. And I just want to caution you because we, I don't even think we've hit the 100th day yet. So this is based on the whatever we're at. We're in the 90s, I think, for days. So this was taken as of 1/4/23. So these are what the subgroups are looking like in terms of students who are, would be, at this point in the school year, if we implemented chronic absenteeism based on the number of either days that they've enrolled or days in the school year, that would be considered to be chronically absent right now. So it would be less than 10 days. So that is a lot of students. You know, you, you have COVID, you have the flu, you're out, you know, five days, six days. And so, you know, right now, this is what our, our subgroups are looking like. And, you know, we run this data to make sure that we're making an impact. So we're periodically checking data. We're constantly trying to intervene and bring kids back and reengage kids in, in school. But, you know, we, we have, you know, obviously, this is, this is the breakdown of what it looks like right now. So when you look at the total number of students at this moment in time or on January 4th that are, would be considered chronically absent, this is the breakdown of the subgroups. So looking at the data a different way. So again, if you're looking at the students who on January 4th would have been considered to be chronically absent, we are looking at, well, where are they? Because some of these students, you know, hopefully, many of them, if not all of them, we can recover. We can help bring them back. We can, and we'll talk about recovery. Mike will talk about recovery in a minute. But we can bring them back, we can reengage them, and we can help recover some of this time. And so, you know, I think that the good news is that when you look at this, of the students who are currently would be identified as chronic absenteeism, you know, 33% are only at 10 to 11% of the days in school. So that means with some good recovery efforts, we can prevent these students from, at the end of the year, being considered chronically absent. Because remember, if they've been enrolled all year, they have to be at 18 days. So in January, if they are, have only been absent for 10 to 11% of the days, that's less than 90 days, probably around 80 days, right? So they've really not been absent enough to push them towards chronically absent at the end of the year if we intervene now. So, you know, so those are the kinds of things that we are talking about. And, you know, the, even the 12 to 19% of the days, which we have, you know, 45 or 46% of our chronically absent students are falling within that 12 to 19% of the days. And we can, with, with some good effort, hopefully, get those kids back in school, get them reengaged and help them recover some days or potentially prevent them from being chronically absent at the end of the, label chronically absent at the end of the year. And then the last group is the students who have already exceeded 20% of the days. And right now, that's about 21% of the students that are labeled chronically absent. So the, the two buckets, the, you know, the 10 to 11% and the 12 to 19%, we are really working to help reengage those students, help prevent them from becoming chronically absent, get them back in school. The 20-plus days, we're still working with those families and those students, but it's a different approach. Because at this point, those students who are falling in that bucket, there's probably a lot more going on. And so there's, you know, more interventions, more work that we need to focus on with those families. So just to talk quickly about some of the, the school-wide initiatives, we consider that to be tier one. And so some of the school-wide initiatives, one of the biggest things, and we're so excited and we have to thank Arbella and Kisaala and all the work that they've done to get this, but is the All-Star Program through the Celtics. It's really an awesome program. Every, when I asked the principals to tell me about some of the things that they've been implementing school-wide, they were all raving about this. And so I'm just going to show you a little video that talks about what the All-Star Program is.
What's up Quincy, it's Lucky.
What's going on? It's Drew Holiday.
This is Peyton Pritchard.
Do you have what it takes to be an All-Star? Show up to school every day. On time.
Be a positive leader.
And participate in the writing and art contest in January.
I want to challenge you.
I want to challenge you.
Let's go. Sign the pledge.
If you're an All-Star and achieve perfect attendance all year, you'll be invited to our end of the year event in May. It's gonna be a party.
I want to introduce you to the exclusive All-Star handshake. When you see a classmate who is showing up to school and being a leader, do this.
So you can imagine this is a big hit with the middle school students. Um, and so they have really enjoyed participating in this. And that was actual live footage of the celebration day that happens at the end of the year. They are in the stadium and. They celebrate all the good work that the kids have done and it's a really, really fun day. And so um, just some of the things along with that, that um, that they're doing. They're obviously working to engage students to have perfect attendance, motivating students for on-time arrival. And also encouraging just a positive school culture, which helps to engage students. Um, and then enable educators to utilize the program to also encourage good behavior. And so um, some of the things that they're doing with that, they have celebrations every month. They give out Celtic swag to the students. So the students who. Um, have, you know, met the different milestones that they set, they they, the Celtics and Arbella send them a whole bunch of different things and the kids get um, an opportunity to. You know, get some Celtics paraphernalia. And um, the students at the beginning of the year, the kickoff, they had a huge kickoff with the Celtics players and Lucky. Um, and the students do and the parents sign a pledge uh, to promote positive attendance, which is wonderful. Um, and then with that, you know, they're in addition to doing those things, which are hugely motivating for the kids. They also have their own things that they do schoolwide, like assemblies, like monthly celebrations. Um, you know, uh, Lisa, you know, gives a trophy over at Atlantic. She gives a trophy out to the homeroom. That has the best attendance and they pass the trophy around and they get different prizes and um, so they're, so at the middle school level. You know, they're really working on this and embracing it and um, you know, trying to have a positive impact on getting their their students to school. So at the elementary school, just to highlight a couple of things that. Some of the principals are doing. So you see the Leep team over on the side. That's an example from Montclair Elementary School. Uh, it's a team that they created to monitor attendance. All of the schools have um, you know, attendance teams or student support teams that they use to monitor attendance. But this is the way that Principal Malvesti uh, has approached it. And um, you know, I really, in particular, I like the identify and utilize a pleasant partner to reach out when. When students are first starting to, you know, have a blip in their attendance, that it's not so punitive, it's more of a outreach for support and it's someone that. You know, it's not the principal, it's someone that maybe that student or that family has a connection with. So it's more of a pros- a positive approach. Um, and so just to show you a couple of other examples, this is Atherton Howe. And I'll just show you um, really quickly how Ms. Marrera addresses attendance in with her morning announcements. Uh, just gonna fast forward it. There we go.
Learning so much about what it means to be a student. When we talk about our three terms of the school year, I would like to recognize those students. Who have been to school every day for the first term. Now, we know that when you're feeling sick, it's important to stay home so that germs don't spread. But for many of us, we have had a healthy first term and I would like to recognize those students. That were at school every day for term one. Attendance matters and every day counts. When you're not here, we miss you.
So you can just see, and then she goes on to recognize the students at each grade level that had, you know, have done really well with attendance. And then over at Snug Harbor, I just, we just selected a couple of little snippets, but at Snug Harbor. Um, you know, Mr. Profetio has a newsletter uh, that he sends out that is just focused on attendance. Um, so you can just see the different facts and uh, some resources to help support families with helping get their kids to school. Um, so every school, you know, elementary, middle are addressing it. They're taking on positive reinforcement techniques and schoolwide initiatives. And then at the high school levels, um, they're also addressing it system uh, schoolwide in terms of tier one. And so they monitor um, you know, and they create individual support plans for students that need it. They may connect a family with a family liaison um, to help support and provide resources or for guidance. Again, connecting with that person to. You know, that one person, every every student should in every family, we should have a connection with uh, someone in the building should have a connection. With that family and that student um, and a positive relationship. And so just making sure that we're really making concerted effort to do that. Um, they have an, they have attendance task force at the high school. Um, and then they also have monthly raffles. They get creative. They do, you know, bucks to their school stores. Um, they do free prom tickets. Um, and you know, they give out gift cards. They do uh, you know, other celebrations like recognition of efforts for for students who have worked really hard um, and you know, come to school every day. And newsletter shout-outs. So both schools, you know, have different approaches, but they all are really promoting the positive. And then uh, before I just pass it on to Mr. Marani, the schoolwide monitoring, we are um, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Ms. Papil, we are tracking and monitoring. Um, so this is just an example of our monitoring sheet. Uh, obviously we redacted it for confidentiality purposes, but um, so this is an example of, you know, how the schools are filling this out. They are keeping track. Because it's really important that we know what's going on with each and every one of these students. We need to know the why, what is the barrier, what is getting in the way? And what are the things that we've done? Um, we also are tracking recovery and Mr. Marani will talk a little bit about that. But each school's SST team or attendance team, they call them different things, is monitoring and tracking attendance. We have a Dan Pacho created a report on Aspen that runs from the date and time that you're running it. It runs a list of who it would is on the chronic absenteeism list for each school at that moment in time. Which is a really great resource for the principals. Um, and then as you see, we have the Google tracking tool.
Ms. Papil. Thank you so much. Um, thank you for having us here. I'm excited to um, talk about the tier two and the tier three. Kind of interventions that we do and really just to share with you the continued work of the principals, the counselors, the supervisors of attendance. They drew an extraordinary job, as you can see with building community and culture, like that's the first tier of the intervention that Erin just spoke about. I'm going to go through some of the intervention data when the supervisors of attendance get involved. I'll talk about the tier two and the tier um, three interventions. In particular, we start with attendance letters. I'll talk about that a little bit. Um, and then when the supervisors of attendance um, come on board, they really are still collaborating with the site. Because the site has the relationship with the kids, then the supervisors of attendance, if you know, there is a continued problem, they develop their own relationship, which carries through. Um, I'll talk about family assistance conferences, like who who is at that meeting. And what the focus of that meeting is and then um, the dropout prevention. So all of um, this is related to dropout prevention in the end and what we do. Um, when it's unfortunate when there is dropout. So on the next slide, you can see um, the supervisors of attendance, they do extraordinary work. They work so, so hard. Um, and they really have a strong connections to the families that they're they're meeting with and trying to help. Um, and the first item on there is the attendance hearing. So there was a hundred and seventy-two attendance hearings. So those hearings actually take place at the site. So when there's been maybe um, a historical look back at a struggle with attendance. And they're starting off the year with continuing a struggle with attendance, you know, we invite those families in to figure out what the barriers are. So it's like the first. Um, conversation that involves a supervisor of attendance. Um, so from, you know, last year, we had a hundred and seventy-two um, hearings. We're on track for about the same amount. We have a hundred and ten. Um, hearings that are already been done by the supervisors of attendance, the family assistance conferences. Um, so at, like I said, I'll explain a little bit more what those are like. Um, but we've had thirty-three um, last year. We've had fourteen this year. So again, kind of on trend, the same, the same numbers trending for those family assistance conferences. Um, child requiring assistance, the CRA petitions, we um, twenty-one were filed last year, four were filed this year. But thirteen from last year are still active, so there's seventeen active um, CRAs. Supervisor of attendance, home visits, so they did a hundred and sixty-one home visits. Um, last year, they've done sixty-four this year. Um, they, you know, are really good about reaching out to families. Families will call them and say, hey, we're having trouble this morning. Can you come out? Can you give some assistance? Um, and they do that. Um, I just put that last number in there, the referrals to crisis during um, a visit by the supervisor of attendance. We saw really an uptick. So if you know, there's an attendance issue, a parent calls, we're having difficulty. Sometimes when they go out there, it is a mental health crisis, so they do refer the family to um, Aspire for a crisis evaluation. Um, and so that's happened, that happened fourteen times last year and three times so far this year. Um, on the next slide, um, the attendance letter is featured here and it does, you know. That is generated by DESI guidance, the reason why we send that letter out. So if there's four unexcused absences. Um, that letter does go out. We do have to state the law. Um, you know, like this is why, you know, you're getting this letter and we're obligated to track. But really it is, you know, to start a conversation about, you know, is there something happening? Do you need some help? Um, you know, it's the first outreach from the site. That goes out by the principal. We do take a good, hard look at who we're sending that letter to. So if we know um, that this is traditionally like a family that doesn't struggle with chronic absenteeism, we might not send it out when they hit the four. Um, it, or if we know that there's been a medical issue or or something like that. So this is a little different than chronic absenteeism. This is unexcused absences. You know, so if there's a doctor's note or something like that, then we wouldn't send that that letter out. Um, here you're going to see um, the tiered supports. So the tier one. Erin explained the tier two is when the uh, the supervisors of attendance jump in, you know, continued support with the counselors, the psychologists, the principals. Um, the health interventionist. So there's a whole team that's continually working and the interventions, you know, they they're fluid. You know, you might be doing the check-in, check-out, identifying that person in tier one. Uh, I'm sorry, in tier two, but you know, those kids, when they do come, they are getting that culture and climate, you know, setting those expectations for. Learning and for regular attendance. Um, the visual just helps demonstrate um, when the supervisors of attendance get involved. And parents and caregivers are referred to the supervisor of intent attendance when the the tier one um, interventions aren't successful. So it really is about encouragement, building relationships, support, trying to get at, you know, what are those barriers? So before we can create any kind of intervention, we have to know what's going on. So that um, is really an important, an important point. Um, the family assistance conferences are a collaborative approach. Um, at those um, conferences. I'm there, the supervisors of attendance are there, um, juvenile probation is there, DCF is there. Principal or guidance counselor is also there and that can feel like a pretty intimidating meeting for a family to walk in. Um, but it's a, it's part of the truancy prevention law. We have to do it. We've been doing it for a very long time. Since nineteen ninety-eight, we've been having family assistance conferences. So way before it was like a mandate from the state. It's a prevention so that we don't have to file a petition, a CRA or failure to send. And I'll tell you, you know, it really speaks to the supervisors of attendance and the relationships that they build. When those families come in, they know that those people at that table are trying to help them. So it's not an adversarial um, meeting. You know, we're very empathetic. We understand things happen. There are very challenging things, you know, people experiences, you know, they experience losses. Um, and they're grieving and they have anxiety and they've got stuck. And it's complicated. And so these families need a lot of help and they need a lot of compassion and encouragement. Um, so we do a lot of action planning and the the families are part of that action planning. Um, sometimes we will bring a student in, you know, to kind of figure out what's going on. You know, usually it's like a lack of attachment to the school. So like they're feeling like they have no one. And it's just too hard to come and to get through that door. When we get them in. You know, usually, you know, it, you know, the progress is just huge. It's getting them in. So these kids are just really, really stuck. Um, and sometimes it is a mental health crisis. Um, you know, sometimes it is. Um, taking a look at like placement, alternative pathways and things like that. So. Um, the process is explained by the probation officer there. Um, she's great. She's been around a long time. Um, and she does explain the court process and sometimes kids do need that and families do need that petition to help move things along because they're so stuck. We don't like to do it, but sometimes we have to file a CRA. Um, so if we've kind of gone through like, you know, all the outreach, the CRA petitions, you know, and things like that. And we're just not successful and a student drops out. We just don't let that student go. We just keep trying to do outreach. We offer, like I said, you know, is it, is this. A situation where Quincy Evening High School might be a better fit? You know, is this a goals referral? Because you know, the student just struggles with behavior and seems to, you know, get into trouble when they go to school. So now they're avoiding school, you know, like what. You know, what kind of supports can we put in place? Is this a situation where a student might need the past program? Um, you know, at North Quincy High School, because they're struggling with anxiety or depression. Um, so we, you know, if we still cannot get the child in and um, the family has decided, you know. Um, that they're not returning and those are for kids that are sixteen years or older because they're no longer required by law to go to school, but you do need parental permission to to drop out. And parents don't want to ever give that position and the parents are so invested. Um, you know, I, there's no judgment on what's happening for these parents. They want their kids to be healthy and happy and successful. Um, like I said, it's a matter of getting the right supports and getting unstuck. Um, but if if they do drop out, we we go back. We run reports of kids that have dropped out. We make phone calls. Um, you know, over the summer, you know, we're making phone calls, meeting with families, what can we do? Get some credit recovery. Sometimes it's a matter of like, okay, you dropped out, but we're going to recover you in the summer. We're gonna bother you in the summer, bring you back in. Um, and have you do credit recovery over the summer. So all right, so you get, you get ten points. That's huge. You know, or you know, you've met the criteria to go to Quincy Evening High School. You now have enough credits. You know, so it's really, there's no giving up, you know? Um, you know, my husband Ray used to work at the goals program. And one time we were talking about a student and I said, well, yeah, that student really does deserve a second chance. And he's like. He deserves a thousand chances and that's so true and that's always stuck with me, that these kids deserve a thousand chances. Like we, it is. Life-changing to have your diploma. Um, you know, if you want to talk about what happens to you for the rest of your life and you, you know. Whether you're going to make money and sustain yourself and things like that, the odds are not with you if you don't have your diploma. So we're very passionate. About making sure we recover those dropouts. Um, so we try very, very hard and we're usually pretty good at at getting kids back. This is just another snapshot. It kind of lays out like what the interventions look like for a tier one, what the interventions uh, look like for tier two and tier three. Just a little bit of a snapshot. There's so much more that goes on. There's so much more that goes on, but it is a good, you know, reminder for us to have these tiered supports and to know what they are so that we don't miss anything. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Marani.
Thank you, Ms. Papil. Good evening, everybody. So I think it goes without saying, but there's tremendous nuance in trying to figure out how we can best support our students in getting them to attend school consistently, getting them to re-engage in the curriculum, in the learning process if they've missed, you know, a significant amount of school days. And, you know, I'm pleased to share that in addition to the multi-tiered approach that was just explained, there's additional options for our students. So more specifically, there's many cases where, you know, principals are meeting with families and we're not just talking about how we can change things moving forward, but how can we recover some of those days? And so again, I'm pleased to share that DESI has provided some guidance, some structure around how we can do that, how we can help students earn some of those days back. So with that, the, the purpose of this attendance recovery is to, one, re-engage students. So that's in the learning process. So as Ms. Papil mentioned, you know, some of these students are just stuck. And so how can we get them unstuck and re-engaged? And so that's the purpose of this recovery process. And then the second is to offer them more opportunities to, to access academic content, enrichment content, SEL content, despite the fact that they may have missed some of those opportunities along the way that have accumulated with those absences. The, the main criteria here for these, that you'll see on the presentation that says academies, but essentially for these recovery opportunities is that we are focused on creating opportunities that meet student learning needs. So this can't just be a one-size-fits-all. We really have to think about what do the individual students need and how can we best meet those needs in their attempt to recover those days? The department offered some examples and so I'll talk a little bit about our plan moving forward. But again, some of the examples that have been presented to us are one-on-one or small group tutoring, acceleration academy-type programs. I'll talk a little bit more about that momentarily. And then also online, online credit recovery courses at the high school level, however, taken in-person with the support of another educator. So as we look at that, I do just want to get a little bit more specific about the recovery guidelines. So anything we offer to our students have to follow the, the items here on this slide. So first, it has to take place outside the regular school day. So we cannot incorporate it into the school day. We have to make sure that whatever we offer is a minimum of four instructional hours per day. And then for each of those days attended, that would earn a student one day recovered, right? So again, that day must be a minimum of four instructional hours. And I do want to point out that this cannot be an accumulation of those hours. So if you remember, I think it's back in 2015 when we just were inundated with snow days, we ran the Beyond the Bell Initiative to help us complete the school year before July 1st. And we were able to accumulate hours over days. In this case, we can't do that if it's less than four hours. So whatever we offer, we have to make sure we meet that threshold of four instructional hours. So now just to speak a little bit about what we're in the planning process of as far as what we're going to offer to Quincy students to help them earn some of those days back. We are focusing on a module-based offering. And each module would include, again, four in-person instructional hours. It's very important to us to make sure that we're taking a holistic approach. So not just incorporating the academics, but really offering that SEL that they may have missed along the way, also providing enrichment opportunities along the way as well, really trying to make sure that that learning experience is an engaging one for our students. Because remember, the main goal here is to re-engage our students in learning process. So we really have to get deep as far as offering them a variety of learning opportunities within that four-hour window. And that could be a project-based learning experience. That could be small group support. There's varied ways that could happen. But one item I do want to highlight here is that we really wanted to focus on making sure each module was a standalone module. And the reason for that is because we wanted to create a program that offered as much flexibility for our students as possible. And so to give an example, there might be a student that simply, let's say for April vacation, let's say we offer four days, which we're planning on doing, and I'll, I'll talk about that momentarily. But if there's a student who can only attend two of those four days, well, that's two days that student could potentially recover. We don't want them to lose that opportunity to earn those two if they can't attend all four. So what we're trying to do is create individualized modules so that a student could theoretically attend Tuesday and Thursday while another student attends all four, while another student might only attend just Friday. And so it's very, very important that we invest some time upfront to make sure these modules can be standalone modules. And so that's something that I'm working closely with the curriculum team, along with Ms. Perkins, to design that. We're in the designing stage of those modules. Our goal is to offer these modules on Saturdays, hopefully beginning in, in as early as March at a district-wide level. So this can still be offered at individual schools, but we want to make sure that there's also ample opportunity for students throughout the district in addition to what might be offered at individual schools. Additionally, April vacation. So looking at Tuesday through Friday, knowing that Patriots Day is at Monday, we wouldn't offer it on that holiday. However, that offers four days potentially that a student could recover. And, you know, earlier in this presentation, Ms. Perkins talked about how there are students that are on the track to being chronically absent, but they're not there yet. And so this is definitely a great opportunity to help get them a little bit more slack as we move forward throughout the school year. A student who might have missed 13 or 14 days, well, we can bring them down to 10, 11 days. May not seem like a lot, but for that individual student, it can certainly make a difference in the experience. And then finally, I just want to conclude to summarize here, oh, I'm sorry, before I summarize, early release days is another opportunity. So again, we had to look at where in the school year, outside of the school day, is a four-hour day appropriate for students? And so we looked at also at school levels at half-days as a potential opportunity. So an example of this is if a school dismissal on an early release day is 11:55, you could potentially offer a module from 12 o'clock to 4 o'clock. So it brings you to end the day at a reasonable hour. It's not bringing the kid too late into the evening. It's pretty close to, you know, a typical extracurricular end time for that student and it allows them to earn a day back outside of the school day for the four hours meeting that department criteria. So I just want to summarize our recovery efforts and just say that it is very, very important that we focus on offering modules that are standalone modules, that can engage students, that can provide them with incentives to participate and encourage them to get back into the learning process.
And that in a nutshell is what we're doing for chronic absenteeism.
Okay. Any, Mr. Begoli?
Questions? How many attendance offices do we currently have? I know that we were short at the beginning of the year.
We have three, but one, one of our attendance officers is on, on medical leave.
Right.
And we are getting some help with residency checks.
From whom?
Christopher Houli.
Is he with the police department?
I'm sorry?
Is he with the police department or who's he with?
No, he's not with the police department. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Because the residency, you know, because their role is dual role and so we were, we were able to get some coverage, it's, you know, for that piece.
And do you, do you feel like we have enough attendance officers? I mean, four for this whole system of 150, 1500 students?
It's actually, yeah, so there's actually three, like, you know, Mr. Houli, oh, I'm sorry. So I, I do, I do feel like, I do feel like we have enough attendance officers. Yeah, I do.
In the recovery program, do you offer it to middle school students?
Yeah, so we're actually looking at offering this from elementary, middle and high school. High school could have an online component as well, still in-person, but through our ACELIS program, they could access it, again, per DESI guidance. But yes, we, we would definitely have to tailor it to the levels to make it age level appropriate. But making sure that we offer elementary modules, middle school modules and high school modules is definitely a priority for us.
So it sounds like the high school one is in place. You say you're looking at the other two areas, two, two levels?
We're definitely focusing on building, we're starting a little bit later with elementary and middle school because of the ACELIS program at the high school level. However, we're still looking at, you know, trying to make sure that students aren't just earning at the high school level the credits back, but also the days back as well. So that component is new even at the high school level. Does that answer the question? Sorry if I...
And then who pays for the student, the staff that do the recovery?
So we're actually using the, some of the summer funding that Mr. Malaney had set aside. So, you know, so he and I have spoken. So, so we are going to use some of that for these recovery academies.
Okay. And when, when does it become, and I'm not sure if we do this anymore, but when does it become to the point where a student has missed so much time that they're unable to go to the next level? I mean, realistically, to, to move a middle school level to high school and they've missed an inordinate amount of time at the middle school level and they haven't participated in the recovery? I mean, they're, we're setting them up for failure in ninth grade, I believe. So...
I mean, I think that, you know, in those circumstances, I, I, you know, we try not to retain, you know, because it, it just isn't great for the student and, but, and it doesn't solve the problem. So I think that that's, you know, probably the biggest issue. You know, whether we retain or we, or we advance them, there's an issue there, right? That the student is not coming to school. And so I think that what we try to do is to figure out what is that issue? And that's when we typically, for those students, like, you know, a lot of times it's a PASS referral or it could be even an out-of-district referral, you know, if a student is really, really struggling, you know? So we, we try, we try really hard to work with that family and figure out what is getting in that student's way and then putting services in place that are, that are going to help, hopefully, you know, help with whatever that issue is. So I would say one of the reasons that we opened the middle school PASS program, a lot of the students that are in that program are definitely students who are school avoiders.
Okay. Is that just in one school?
It's at Atlantic, two classes at Atlantic, yeah.
Does, can that, can a kid be referred from, say, Point Webster or...
Oh, yes, yep.
And they get moved?
Yep, they do, all the time. Yeah.
Okay. And with our Hispanic Latinos, I know we have the Celtics involved, but soccer's a worldwide game and it's their game. Is there any consideration to partner with the New Orleans Revolution?
We could certainly look into that, yeah, definitely, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Thank you so much for this. There are very disturbing numbers though. I know that, you know, one in four in the state is horrible, but when we think of our kids and it's just, it's so disturbing to see the loss. So I have a couple of questions. Are all the middle schools involved in the Celtics program?
Yes.
That's great. The one thing that bothers me about the Celtics program is you could have an absence in September and you're eliminated from the, you're eliminated from the game, you know? So it's almost like it was a semester-wide. The kids could recover that sort of thing, but I just, it's, I, I understand it, but it's a little disheartening to me to see that one absence in September and you're not, you're not going to be included anymore. My other question is the recovery, which I think is great. So does it actually come off their attendance at, at the...
Yes.
At DESI?
Yes.
Shows up so that they actually recover the day?
Yep.
So it doesn't look like chronic absenteeism?
Yes.
And we, are we, I'm like, are you guys in the curriculum team working with our teachers on these modules? Because I can't think of anybody better...
Absolutely.
To actually come up with things, especially if something's standalone.
Yes.
Especially if a different subject matters too.
Of course.
Yep, they're, they're creating them.
They're creating, that, that's really great. I'm a little dismayed by the look of that attendance letter. I know you have to talk about the law, but it looks so, it looks so like a form letter to me. It just looked like the person who was writing it knew anything about the kid they were talking, writing the letter to. And I, hopefully there's some reaching out before that letter goes out and there's some more. I saw that you had, I forget what the word was, but somebody involved in, nice, a nice person.
Yeah, we tried that first.
I forget the word you used, but there's somebody else doing it because that letter is really...
Intimidating.
Very intimidating. It would turn me off. It would really turn me off a great deal. So that was my other question. I have one more. I'm glad that, that the, that the teachers are participating. I think that's really, really important. I can't think of my other questions, so I'll wait until the rest of people come around.
Mrs. Hubley?
Thank you. So I have heard from Secretary Tutwell around the radio, so I know that this is a statewide...
Yes.
I've heard his plea out there.
Yeah.
So no, this isn't just QPS. But with the Hispanic Latino chronic absenteeism high, do we have reasons that we know, like why have we reached out to ask why specifically this population is having?
Yeah, I, I think there's a lot of different reasons. I mean, I know from what I've heard and Mara's been with me when we've met with the high schools, in particular, I'd say it's an issue at the high school level. And I think it's, you know, sometimes students are working during the day. I'd say that's one thing. You know, which is why we also created, we don't have it in the presentation, but it absolutely was another way that we're working to address this is, you know, providing an EL component to Quincy Evening High School. So we had, I think, 12 students, maybe, that we were able and that are going and that are doing Quincy Evening High School. So, you know, every little bit helps when you, when you can help a student, you know? And so, and so that's a great thing. So, so some of them, I think, are working during the day. Sometimes I think students come at an older age and like Mara said, they're not engaged. Maybe their families have made them register or want them to, you know, come to learn English or, you know, whatever, whatever the case may be. And I think that they're just, they're not engaged in, with the school. They're not connected to the school. And so, you know, trying to figure out ways to, to, you know, have them connect with an adult, you know? So we're, we're working, you know, with both high schools. I would say in that particular subgroup, in particular Quincy High School, with, you know, how can we create maybe different pathways, different opportunities? You know, one thing I would say that we've heard from the school is the shops, the CVTE programs. You know, there's so many of our kids, you know, especially our EL students, who would love to do a shop. But, you know, sometimes the English piece, you know, can kind of get into the way. I mean, some of those things are, it's a safety issue, you know? And so figuring out ways, you know, whether that's like, do we provide a family liaison kind of person or translator in, in the shops, looking at, you know, alternative pathways, just being creative in how we're addressing student needs to try to provide opportunities that are, like I think Mike said and Mara said, you know, that are going to capture them, right? You need that hook. How are we going to hook them to get them back in the door or to get them in school? And so it's just being very creative and, you know, looking, every kid, every student is different, every student has different reasons, but I would say those are the big things that we've heard.
And on the other side of that though, encouraging so many incentives to come to school, are we hearing from our school nurses that there's any problems with having to now send kids home because they are coming to school sick?
That, that's a really good question. And you know, it's actually, I was talking to Andrea Huer about this, you know, as a coordinator for nurses. And she actually said, tell, like, you know, we should be telling parents if they are, you know, questioning whether or not, send them to school and the nurse will assess them. You know, if you are concerned, like, you know, maybe they're just not feeling good, it's now becoming a pattern, send them to school and the nurse will assess them. Let the nurse help you, you know? Because sometimes, you know, if it's, if it's the standard things, right? If your child has a fever, if your child is throwing up, your child's been diagnosed with the flu or COVID, yeah, definitely, please keep them home. But if, you know, the, the child is like every day has a headache before school or has a stomach ache or, you know, those kinds of things that you might be saying like, I don't know if they're really sick or if they are now just kind of gotten into a pattern where, that they're having a hard time breaking. You know, let the nurse help you and let the nurse help you assess whether or not that is an illness that needs to be followed up on or... or that just needs a little TLC and we can help them get through the day.
Okay. And lastly, I love the recovery. I think that, that's fabulous, the plan. I love the Saturdays. I love the April vacation possibility. That's great. The early release days, being 12 to 4, how does that work with that time overlapping with our teachers' PD time?
So we would have to avoid those days. We would, so there's, there's not PD every single week, especially, it would be more challenging at the middle school and high school, it would be challenging to do one a half day. But at the elementary school, you could avoid those days, you could avoid the PD days.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Mr. Guttrow, there you go.
Good. Thank you. Thank you so much for this presentation. I've got a lot of questions, but I'm going to be very efficient and get through them. At the school improvement plan discussions, I brought this up, you know, I looked at chronic absenteeism and I saw the numbers, like, Mrs. Lebo said are off the charts, you know, not just here, everywhere, but off the charts. And it really concerns me. You know, I think it was Woody Allen that said 90% of success is just showing up. And we need to convey that to our kids, that 90% of success is just showing up. And so I had a couple of, a bunch of quick questions. I'll rattle them off and you can figure out who answers. So in, in the third slide, it says one in four in Massachusetts students missed 18 days or more. But then in our slide, it didn't have the same number. It broke it down by nine through 12 and K through eight. So I was looking for apples to apples. So what is our, is, are we one in five? Are they, you know, what's, how many students, we have 10,000 students, how many students do we have that are chronically absent?
Um, I would have to double check on what the number was last year. I could, I could get back to you. I can tell you right now that the trending, the data from today, but again, I would say this with a grain of salt, because not all of those students are going to end up being chronically absent. It's the point we're at in the year, but right now-
Let's do last year.
So right now, it's about 1,500, 1,500. I don't know, but again, not all of those students will end up being chronically absent.
Last year, how many were chronically absent?
I don't have the, I don't have the actual number.
14.9, or is that, oh, that's 23, 24. Because it was only, and not to say only, but it was 2% improvement, pretty much, right?
Yeah.
Across the board. So 1,800, 1,500, what were we at in terms of students that were chronically absent?
I can get that, too. I'm not- 10,000 kids?
That were chronically absent?
If there's 3,000 high school students period.
Period, yeah. 26%.
So 26% of that is-
26% of 3,000?
26% of 3,000, so it's 26% of 3,000, and then there's about-
300, 300.
6, 7. And it's grades one through eight.
One through eight, yeah.
Not K. So there's probably, there's 1,000 K-1 students. So that leaves you with 6,000 grades one through eight students, and about 15% of those students were chronically absent.
6,050. That's another 900 or something like that. So 900 and 750, 1650, basically, were, were chronically absent. So the, it says district-wide goal, basically. Is it 18 different templates? I mean, I know that you walked us through Montclair and a few others in terms of what they're doing. Are we designing a district-wide template for schools to populate to do outreach? Or is it basically every, it's up to every school? You know, I mean, I know schools are doing a lot, and they're doing it individually, and you shared with us a couple of the success stories, which is great. But what are we doing differently, designing that, that they're going to, they're going to incorporate into the mix that's going to change it?
Yeah, so we've asked every single school to take on, you know, either whether it's their SS team or their attendance team, their monitoring, we've, every single school, the expectation is that every single school has a school-wide program, a school-wide positive-
Right. Is that new?
Um, I would say it, we had it before, but this year has definitely brought it back. I don't think that schools were really pushing, they couldn't the past three years. So I would say this year, yes, it's new that they are taking on school-wide attendance initiatives again. Lots of them did it three years ago, but haven't done it in a while. So that, I would say, is, is a new thing. Also, you know, having bi-weekly, I think most schools are bi-weekly meetings of their attendance team, where they're running the reports. The reports on Aspen are sent to the principals every week. Dan has them, Dan Pacho has them automatically sent to principals, I think, on Thursdays. So they get the chronic absenteeism report right in their inbox. They meet with, with their teams, and then they're tracking the data using the Google tracking form. That's every single school. So what they do for incentives may vary, but the expectation is the same, that they are, that they're taking on a school-wide initiative. We know what they're doing for interventions. We, we work with them on those interventions with the attendance officers. We have an attendance officer tracking sheet. We have the, the tracking sheet that we shared with you. We can see all of this, all of these things. And, and then, like I said, those are kind of the standard things that we expect. We expect you to have it be a school-wide initiative. We expect you to monitor the attendance. I would say at the very least, every other week. And we expect you to be documenting what's happening with these students.
Is there, and I know the principals meet routinely, whether it's elementary or middle or high school. You know, if you took, what, the 11 elementary schools and you ranked them, you know who's got the, and who's got the best? And so is there time set aside for discussion that says, hey, we've got, we've really had significant improvement because this is the model that we've employed? Is that happening?
We actually just had a conversation very much like that on, I can't, I think it was last week, was it, or the beginning of this week? No, it was last week, I think. Yeah, my weeks are running together, but we literally just had that conversation where the principals shared and talked about, you know, some principals said, I'm struggling with this. Like, does anyone have any suggestions for this? You know, we, we literally just had that conversation in a principal meeting.
Great. Yeah, I mean, just because, I mean, somebody's succeeding more than others. And, and, you know, the same thing with the middle schools, one through five, you know, you could see the numbers. Is there anybody that has a model or things? I loved the classroom trophy idea. I love the classroom trophy. So to Mrs. Lebo, you, you have one absence as, as an individual kid, and, you know, you feel like, oh, well, I'll never get the perfect attendance. Attendance is not important, forget it. But when you're a classroom, you can compete every month to be that classroom. But they need to understand the importance of being there, you know. So, which gets my question about, is there anything that we do the first week of school, district-wide, where we say, let me walk you through the power of being present, you know, the pros and the cons of absenteeism? And, you know, the 90% of success is just showing up, and let them know that, you know, when you're absent, for the students that are absent, they're more likely to do X, they're more likely to do Y, they're more likely to do Z. If you need something, these are the supports you, like, literally out of the box broadly, let them know that, you know, attendance matters, you know. You might struggle in this class, you might struggle in that subject, you might struggle, struggle in this topic, but your presence is going to help you succeed, and that's attendance. And literally out of the box, and then do it, you know, with all of the parents out of the box to say, clean slate, new year, you're good, translate everything into different languages, get it out there. I mean, do we do anything at the beginning of the year? If we don't, could we consider it being more stronger at the beginning of a school year that talks about the power, you know, the pitfalls of chronic absenteeism? The numbers are high, but there are things that you can do. If you're sick, stay home, but there are things you can do. So I, I didn't know if you wanted to say anything about that.
I, I would, I absolutely think that every single principal does something like that. But I, do I think that we could do something maybe stronger from a district perspective? Probably. But I do think that every single principal addresses that. I know, I absolutely know that they have assemblies at the beginning of the year with all of their kids, and they talk about attendance, and they talk about the importance of being in school. Could we add a district component to that? I would say that's a, that's a really great suggestion.
Thank you. Good. And a couple of final questions. So Mara, on your data about, and I was trying to follow your attendance hearings, family assistance conferences, and you don't have to walk through what they all mean. I was trying to figure it out a little bit. But based on the number of chronic absences, 1,600, say it's 1,500, 1,600. You know, the attendance hearing, does that include the parent, or is that just the student? That includes the parent? And I'm saying 1,600, and there's 172 hearings, you know. And, and then 1,600, and there's 161 home visits. Those numbers, you know, and so based on those numbers, and it's a lot of work for people to do, and to get out there, and do we have the staff and the resources to do it? But it, it moved the needle, what, 2%, right? So I'm just trying to see, you know, our, I'm not saying don't do the hearings, I'm not saying don't do the home visits. And I know that's all part of it. But if we have that many chronic absences, you're obviously narrowing it down to some real serious cases.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm looking at, you know, in between, I'm looking at 173 to 1,600. You know, that's what I'm thinking about in terms of what, what the intervention would be. So, and then I had, and, and then I, I had another question on the tier-two interventions, that say rally support, create a check, and check-in, check plan at school, that one, identify barriers, change course schedules. I assume we do these every year anyway. This is not new, right?
It's-
Or is it? Is all this new?
Go ahead.
No, no, they're not necessarily new, but, you know, they're important, and I think they're really helpful.
I just didn't know if we-
They're true and tried.
If they were new or not new, you know, I mean, because it, is it something that we do every year? Or is there something here that's, that's different?
I, I do think there is something here that's different, and I think that that is, I think we have to remember that we are coming off of a pandemic where we are now changing the narrative. So for three years, or just about, we were telling students and families, do not come to school. If you have the sniffles, stay home, right? And so now we are, like, we're completely flipping on a dime and saying, I know we told you if you have the sniffles, stay home, but no, actually, it's fine, we'll give you Kleenex, you know. So it, it's a, it's a complete switch of a message. And so, yes, did we do all these things? We got our numbers. Our numbers were so great before the pandemic hit for chronic absenteeism because we did all of these things. And so then it all blew up, and we stopped, and we were telling people, do not come to school. In fact, people were staying home 20, 30 days at a time, you know, in the beginning when they, when they first had COVID. And so then, you know, last year, we kind of started to rebuild and repair. It became a little bit of a focus again. But this year, it's, we're all in it now. It's a focus. We need to get back to getting our kids back in school. We have to tighten up, and we have to change the message a little bit. Because, you know, for a very long time, we were telling families that it, you know, not any kind of sickness, really, don't send your student to school. And so now we're switching that message, and we're saying, no, actually, we want you in school. And, and I think that that, that is a hard shift. And so I think we, you know, we started that work last year, and we're, and we're finishing, you know, we're not finishing, but we're continuing it, and we're doing a stronger push. And so I think that one of the reasons we're here tonight is because parents are getting these letters now, you know. And not that they didn't before, but this is, this is now a focus again. We have to get our kids back in school, and we have to get them here consistently, which is what I think, you know, I know all of you are saying. And so it is a switch of a message. So we're here tonight because parents need to know that this is a switch of a message. And we understand that, and we are going to work with you through that, and our staff is going to work with you through that. But yes, all of the things, we've done many of these things, if not all of them before, and now we're doing them again because it is important, and we need our kids back in school.
And I do think because we're looking at the data and because of those reports, then you're looking, you're going to see that these kids come out teared, you know. When the reports come, you know which tier, you know, intervention is needed for that student. And so that brings us back to making sure that we're using those interventions based on those tiers. So it's, it is, it is different. It's different.
One final observation, and then one, one last question. So on, on one of the charts, the preliminary data that by percentage of student group population chronically absent. My, my observation is that if you remove Asian students and former, and EL and former EL students, the percentage is going to go up substantially, because those two have relatively low numbers, you know. So my point in that is that you said you were doing subgroup outreach, you were planning subgroup outreach. Super important, you know, to the, because the majority of the subgroups are, have substantial absences. So if you pull those two out, the numbers are going to go up even higher than they are, and they'll skew it, and it would be frightening. And then the final question was around recovery. I think Mike was talking about recovery. Is, so are you saying that these are new elements that the state is offering and suggesting? Or this is something that we've created or for recovery?
Well, I'll actually, Erin, if you would answer that, only because we, when was that, earlier in January? They offered some guidance on that, as far as, I believe, much of this is new, but I'll let you speak to that.
Yeah, so we did have recovery options before COVID. We were able to recover days. And we actually did, at the time, we created, it was right when we first introduced Google Classroom. And so we created Google Classrooms, and we were able to recover some ti, you know, days that way. And so we have done recovery efforts in the past, and, but it was, they were different. They didn't require the four hours then. They're now requiring it to be four consistent hours, which is different. And so I think the guidance is very much tightened up from what it was prior to COVID. And it's a little bit, it's a little bit more stringent, you know, in what they're going to be counting. And, and I would assume, and I, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't want to guess, but I would bet that probably it's a little bit more stringent because they saw what happened when kids did virtual school during COVID. And so to say that you're just going to, well, we're going to just do virtual school, we're, we're going to do a Google Classroom, and we're going to do whatever for, you know, an hour, and that, that will count somehow towards school. I think they now know that in order for kids to be able to get the academic, the content, because that's really what it's about. It's about, you know, making sure they own the content. And so just making sure that it is, there is a more stringent requirement so that it, people just aren't like trying to haphazardly recover days and really not do anything. We, we want to actually make sure kids are owning the content before they, they move on, as Mr. Bregoli said.
Yeah, and finally, to Mr. Bregoli's point, to that point, you know, I'm chronically absent. You know, my criteria is chronically absent. What happens to me?
Well, it definitely impacts your education.
No, there's no question, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't, nothing really happens to you other than the things we talked about, like with Mara, you know, in terms of, you could, it could potentially be an FAC meeting, we could file a CRA, and you end up court-involved, or we could-
For the, you know, the 1,600, or, let's say the subset between the Mara's hearing number and the other number. What if I don't, I mean, do I want to give up my April vacation? I'm trying to put my head in a 16-year-old body or a 14-year-old body, you know. What am I going to get by giving up my vacation time for this recovery program? Or will I be punished in some certain way that is problematic? You know what I mean? Like, they're, you're going to get the parents that are, the active parents that are going to make the child do the recovery program. But then, then it's the rest of those underserved populations that don't have attentive parents or have learning issues or whatever the case may be. It's the same group that we're trying to reach here that have the chronic absenteeism numbers that, what's the incentive for them to do the recovery program? Otherwise, and, and, I mean, at the end of the day, all of this should be in our EDI subcommittee anyway to, to look at this stuff. But I'm just trying to figure out what, how you, how you make the case to that segment of the population that you really should pursue this instead of just the parents that-
Yeah, I think that we have to work with the families on that, and I think that we have to build in incentives, some pretty good incentives for kids to go, which, you know, we, we are doing. And making the, as Mike talked about, the things that are like high interest, you know, to try to pull some of those things into the program. So it doesn't, it, it shouldn't be punitive, and we don't want it to be punitive. But then there's also the piece that we know that there are kids that- But then there's also the piece that we know that there are kids that we are not going to entice to get there. And so we have to think of other things that we can do for those students to make sure that they're, you know, getting the education that they deserve. So, you know, just working with families and, and, you know, trying different things and trying to figure out what's going to work to, to get this student back in school. And we, we get pretty creative, you know, with some of the things that, that we offer and try to do, you know, so.
That was my last question. Sorry to take so much time. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mrs. Purdyos.
Thank you. I'm the one with the million questions. I just actually had a question about, since Mrs. Lebo and Mr. Guttar brought up the, the Arbella program. And I wish that the middle school principals were still here to ask them. There was, I don't know if it's still this year, but there was a part that if you were absent, you could also write, you could write an essay or like draw a picture and you could still, so you can still attend that end of the year celebration, even if you have a day that you're not there. So, which actually, we talked about this a lot at the Point PTO meetings because this kind of, the Arbella program came up like kind of right during COVID, sort of. And it was really like, it kind of was hard for parents to say, well, you know, I want to keep my child home so they're, so they're not, you know, getting other kids sick. So we talked a lot about, you know, perfect attendance. The message of perfect attendance is really hard, but especially with all the mental health issues like we want. I mean, if you need to take a mental health day, we do that a lot in work and businesses are seeing that a lot. So I don't know if the message has to be perfect attendance, but it's more...
Yeah, and it's not, yeah.
So, but programs like that do kind of push that, which is, I do get that that's a goal. But it's also okay to just, you know, to take a day when you need to take a day. It just can't be so many days that you can't get back from that, I think is a good message to have. So I'd hate to see us kind of go further down the perfect attendance path. That worries me a little. But, you know, I know like for the Arbella program, they have like an attendance contract. And I want to take another look at that to see if it says, do your best to get there every day. That would be great if it said something like that.
I think, I, I don't, I don't know what the, I don't have the contract. I mean, I don't know what it says, but...
I think I signed it at one point for one of my kids, so I should probably know that.
But I do think that the principals make every effort to, and that with, you know, working with Arbella to get the students there. You know, so like not, you know, I mean, Arbella's putting this forward, the Celtics are putting this forward. And, you know, I think it's a great incentive for kids. And I do think that principals work really hard to like celebrate, you know, if you, if you have done, had some absences, but you've recovered and you've worked really hard, they do their best to figure out another way to get you to that celebration. Or to get you the swag or, you know, so, so they try really hard to do that.
That's perfect. So is this a problem at every school in Quincy? Or are there some schools that we have that aren't in the danger zone area and we're asking every school to focus on it? But are there some that really don't have to focus on it?
I think every school has kids that are chronically absent. Some are more than others, but I definitely think every school has it.
Okay. And are the principals aware of that? They kind of have a ranking of...
Oh, they do. They know every single kid. They know what's happening with that kid. You know, it, sometimes it's, you know, it's unfortunate, but it, sometimes it could be the student broke their leg. You know, it could be, it could be really simple things and they were in traction and were unable to come to school for a month. You know, all of that counts.
I just mean, do they know where they are in relation to the other elementary schools, say?
Oh, yes. Yep, they do. It's all public. Everyone can see it.
And not to, not to kind of pit one against the other, but more to say, gee, they must be doing something really good. And to, you know, encourage those offline conversations like, hey, I really, what are you doing? Because I'd like to learn more about that.
Yes, absolutely.
And so, correct me if I'm wrong. So at the high school level though, and this may be a totally different topic that I'm not, I see the connection, but I'm not sure if there is one. At the high school level, if you miss six of a particular class, you will fail, right? If it's, if you miss seven of a particular class, you will fail no matter what your grade is in that class, correct?
I would say that, yes, I would say that there are circumstances where the, the principal and the staff work together to figure out what's going on. Because if a student has done all of the work, you know, we try not to just destroy a student because of absences. So I would say that they take it, they do take that case by case. And so for instance, if a student was, had a hospitalization or whatever the case may be, I think that they do try to work when they can. There are some instances where it's not possible and the student has done no work and has missed 15 days, you know, and they're going to fail. But I think that they do try to, if, if there's a circumstance where they can help a student so that they don't get zero credit for that class, they, they do do that.
Okay. So I just wanted to see how that kind of factored into what, to the chronic absenteeism as a whole, to kind of, I didn't know if there was a tie in there for you guys. And that nurse message, like you, I think you said, you articulated it really well, that it's a total shift in message. And really just, you know, as much as I'd like, love to think every parent at home is watching our school committee meetings, I don't think they are. So having that message, having that exactly how you said it kind of out there, maybe a message from, from our nurse director, our health director, just to say, you know, I know this used to be what we told you, but this is really important now. So I think that would be a great to just say, to acknowledge that it is a change order. And I love the, if you're unsure, send them and we'll assess them. Because as a parent, you don't know sometimes. You're like, well, I'm not going to send my kid if they're sick, right? And you kind of don't want to do that. But if that's what's being encouraged, then that should be the message that's kind of out there. And then I just had a couple of questions on the recovery section. Sorry, the monitor over there. So I think this is great, but I do have a lot of questions. So you want to recover what they missed. So if you're doing kind of a catch-all of like, okay, so first graders, here's your standalone content module. How do you know what that first grader missed? Or are they just going to go in for four hours and learn something that they already know? Do you know what I'm saying? So how do you do that?
So I think the answer there is in the differentiation of the instruction. So as far as meeting needs of students, but also looking at when we build those modules, we're really focusing in on those prerequisite standards that students would need, absolutely crucial standards that they would need to be successful as they move on to the next year. So we're spending a lot of our efforts as far as working with teachers to really target those standards, regardless of the specific day that a child might have missed previously and saying, okay, if there's, you know, a few standards that at a minimum, they can walk out of one school year with and bring with them to the next, what are those? And that's really guiding our design and development of those modules.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I can see, you know, if a student broke their leg and missed a bunch of days or whatever and they wanted to recover it, if they're then learning, you know, stuff that they were in school for, that's not going to be a really big incentive for them to want to be there and stay engaged because they already learned it, right? So that's, I think, you know, maybe that's going to need to kind of evolve and tweak as to how to, if those, if those modules kind of keep hitting them. And then, so would those recovery efforts be held at the student's school? Or would they be held in like one school and they would have to travel to that school?
So we're trying to offer both situations in that case. So in other words, we're, we're trying to work with schools to offer individualized school modules for recovery, but also making sure that we as a district are offering additional.
Okay. So, so just so that I'm understanding, so April vacation, all the schools will be open. You'll have enough staff to, no?
No, not, not, no. So we're trying to offer options for both. So meaning like some, it might be a Saturday, it could be a half-day Wednesday. District-wide, it would be the April vacation. But that would be, that'll be like, we'll have a few programs running. That wouldn't be, like every single school wouldn't be able to do that.
Right. I was just thinking the amount of staff you'd need just to open the building on one, on a Saturday or a vacation week. That's, that's a lot.
Yeah.
But having those students have to travel to a different location might be troublesome too, if they're already having trouble getting, getting there. So I think some concerns there a little bit. And then I'm a little concerned about taking funding from the summer program because I know how successful that was last year. So I don't love hearing that, but I, I mean, I see the value of the recovery program. But I'd love for us to find maybe some other area to...
Well, we are, we are applying for a grant for the summer program, actually, to, so hopefully that, if we get that, then that would offset it. So there is a grant that Mike is writing that's for the hands-on math and...
Yeah, so as part of the accelerated learning program that Desi's putting forth, not just with April, but they're also trying to provide districts with incentives to fund summer programs as well. And so right now, what, what Ms. Perkins is speaking to is, we're in the process of writing the grant to help supplement our summer programming in addition to what we're doing during the school year.
Gotcha, gotcha. I love how there's so many grants available now for things we already do.
I know, right?
And my last question, I promise. Again, for the modules, the standalone modules, content, how would you handle high school where they would have different subjects, right? So how would you be able to handle that where you don't know what classes that student took? So how would you know what to put in that standalone content to hit all of the classes that they missed to count for that?
So that's, the benefit there at the high school level is we do have the Acelis platform. So it's really about giving them a space in school with guided support from educators as they take on the Acelis program, which does then allow them to access particular subject areas.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. That's it.
Okay, thank you. I think they made me vice chair, so I wouldn't be able to say anything at the end. I will, I will say though, I don't envy you. I think you're doing amazing work and I know you think it's important and you put all, you've always been putting your efforts into making sure the kids are here. My only thing would be that, you know, it's super complicated. It's layered. It's cultural. It's family issues and mental health issues. So I don't think we'll, the goal would be, we hope that we'd be able to get it to like nothing and the kids, all the kids would attend. But it's probably a goal that's really difficult to, to reach because of all those other issues. You know, if we have 2,000 kids that were having issues getting them to school, we have 8,000 that are coming, you know? And, and we're doing, and we have families and parents and, and staff that are doing the work to make sure that that's happening. And that population is really difficult, right? To make sure that they're here. And I, I think you're doing what you need to do and I know that you're expanding it and trying to get it to a place where, you know, we can even reach more kids and get them here. But I really think it's complicated and I applaud the work you're doing because it's not just educating the kids. It's a lot of other social, emotional stuff that we have to deal with and family things, you know? When you talk about the Hispanic population culturally, they want to work. They come in here and they, you know, they want to get a job and be able to support themselves and their families. So that's my thing. I think everyone else asked questions except, oh, Emily's, oh, there we go back. You can, yes.
I just want to reiterate something that Ms. Purdyos said. That letter from the nurse could be very, very important. Parents are not sure when to send their kids to school. They really are not. The elementary parents are not. And that, they have a 14.9, almost a 15% absenteeism in the elementary schools. That's getting the message to parents. And I don't know whether, how carefully you can say, let's send your kids to school and they come in with a temp of 102. I do think the message has to be out there and it has to be clearer than that. And, and we did hear from every one of the schools on their SIP about their absenteeism because we ask questions about that. So we know, and I have a list, so I know how, how bad it is. So we did get that and the parents, the principals are all aware, so just so you know that. You mentioned something, I feel I have to say something because I'm sure Mr. Sagala was horrified because he knew you didn't really mean when you said EL students are held out of chapter 74 programs because of the language issues.
No, no, not, they're not, they're not held out. They're not held out, but it's more challenging, I would say.
But it's an equity issue.
But yeah, it's, so we need to resolve that. We need to solve that, you know?
We may have to look at that admission policy to programs to make sure that it's...
They're absolutely not held out. They do, they, it's the attendance. So that's the...
I didn't think about that, but I wanted to make sure that it didn't sound like that.
Yeah, so you know, when you, when they register, they come, they, we, we don't necess, you know, the kids might move in in the middle of the year. We don't necessarily know what they're interested in. You know, there's a whole...
Also not there in the ninth grade typically.
Correct, right?
Which I think is probably the bigger detriment to getting into the program.
So we just, we need to figure it out because, you know, we want them to have access. And for some kids, you know, that would be a really awesome thing if, you know, that, to be able to, to figure that out and help them. It might help them engage, you know, so.
I agree. And then my last point is that our attendance policy, Mrs. Purdyos brought it up, is very specific and it's our policy. And I really think that we need to revisit that policy because it bumps up against some of the stuff the state is saying and some of the stuff you're doing. And either we're not doing it or we are doing it. But I think that we really need to revisit our attendance policy about around absenteeism and failing classes. So I'd like to put that into policy. Good. Put it on the next agenda. Thank you.
I, I will say, I think that comparing the different schools is difficult to do too because every school has a different population of families. And I think that's a difficult thing to be able to like measure against each other, you know? And one question I did have is, do we see that families have, there's like siblings? Is it, would we see a whole family not attending? You know, like is it something, do we see that?
I would say at times, you know, I mean, if you're looking at chronic absenteeism and you're looking at kids, they may have the numbers, but they could be successful still in school. Do you know what I mean? So like, you're right, it is complicated. Like it's not a, we can't put kids in a box. Do you know what I mean? So sometimes there's, you know, like I said, like a family loss and the whole family's impacted. You know, there's all kinds of different things. Sometimes parents haven't graduated high school. I mean, it's very few, you know what I mean? But, you know, that, that does happen and sometimes that has an impact. But I, I just think that people are really trying to do their best. And it's our obligation to try to meet them where they're at so that we, it's like a growth mindset. Like people are saying, you're not going to have perfect attendance, but like, where are you and how can we get you here? You know, and when we do that, that's when we really engage families and that's when they connect and they come back. So that's how we try to look at it.
Thank you. Amy.
So I wanted to like express...
Okay, speak loud. There you go.
Okay. I wanted to express how like students feel about school. Like I think the institution as a whole, it is, it is hated. Like, people, there's, it's sort of a culture where, you know, you're coming to a place and then you're tested and you're stressed. And I'd say like, I, I do have like a lot of privilege, you know? And that chronic absenteeism hasn't affected me personally. But I think even for me, like a lot of the times, like coming to school is like, you know, it's not, it's not something I look forward to. But, and then especially with chronic absenteeism and I think students like as a whole at the school, they experience this sort of growing mountain, especially, you know, the mountain. I think you touched on it and you like acknowledged it, which I appreciate a lot. Especially like procrastination. I do have a procrastination tendency and just thinking about it, like the mountain just keeps growing with this absenteeism. So then you're like just drowning almost. And then I think my brother, he also really doesn't like school. He's in elementary school and, you know, I think a part of it is you're coming back after a COVID year. You've done remote learning and remote learning is arguably way more fun for the student, right? You're at home, you're, you know, maybe you're not with your friends, which is the one downside, but it's easier. And then you're coming back, especially he's in fifth grade. So he had, he really never had real years of school, right? And so I think a part of that is we have to address absenteeism, but we also have to address like just the idea of school and the culture. And I don't think it's just a here issue, but it's the idea that like school, there should be positive. And then once you get to like the high school level, you know, it is about tests. It, it is about grades and it gets really stressful sometimes. But like making it like just a more pleasant environment, which I know you guys like can't control that. I don't expect, you know, but yeah. And then my second point was I wanted to commend you on, I think you're doing, you said the state released like a lower percentage than what you had. So that then for improvement, so that means you're setting like in compare, so that's like kudos to you. And then in comparison like to the state, are we, I would assume because of that, or we're doing quite well or?
I, I think we're, I think we're both the same as the state. Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're, you know, I looked at the state numbers before, you know, earlier today. I think we're similar.
And then is there like tronty, like in dropout, does that affect this? Like if, is a dropout an automatic chronic absenteeist? No, right?
Well, I just put the dropout information in there because, you know, kids that are chronically absent throughout their school career are more likely to drop out. So that's why I kind of made that connection.
So if you drop out, are you considered in the chronic absentee, no?
Well, you're, you're unenrolled because, you know, so it's like the end of your, your, your education and we never want that to happen. So that's why we do so much.
So I think it's still important to get them back because regardless of, yeah.
Right.
Because, yeah, so that was my point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are we all set?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have early literacy screening. Ms. Perkins?
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have early literacy screening. Ms. Perkins, Ms. Graham and Ms. Vaughn.
All right. Thank you so much for having us this evening. I know you've been sitting a long time, so we.
Love you.
I know. Thank you. We'll get to our content as, as quickly and as efficiently as possible. So thank you again for having us here this evening. We've been talking the last couple of years about the new regulations that came out with early literacy screening. So we wanted to take this opportunity now that we are in our first year of, of, you know, completely administering this to all students, grades K through three. Wanted to kind of give you an overview of an amendment to the regulations and what we are doing here in Quincy to support our students in grades K through three. So back in January of 2019, there was an amendment to chapter 71 of the Massachusetts general law that added the following provision. "The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, in consultation with the Department of Early Education and Care, shall, subject to appropriation, issue guidelines to assist districts in developing screening procedures and protocols for students that demonstrate one or more potential indicators of a neurological learning disability, including but not limited to dyslexia." And what this guideline did was serve really three important purposes. First of all, it provided a set of screening guidelines for all students. And I just want to stress that this is for all of our students, grades K through three. It provided a framework of interventions for students at risk. And this is universal framework that is used across all of our elementary schools in the whole entire district. And then thirdly, it provided comprehensive resources of evidence-based practices aimed to all educators to support students that are potentially at risk.
Good evening, everyone. So in September of 2022, there was an amendment to the original special education regulation that you just heard Ms. Gray and talk about. And it added on an early literacy screening requirement. And this new regulation went into effect this past July. The summary of the new regulation is in the bullets on this slide and I'd like to read these to you. "Each school district shall at least twice per year assess each student's reading ability and progress in literacy skills from kindergarten through at least third grade using a valid developmentally appropriate screening instrument approved by DESI. If such screenings determine that a student is significantly below relevant benchmarks for age, typical development in specific literacy skills, the school shall determine which actions within the general education program will meet the student's needs, including differentiated or supplementary evidence-based reading instruction and ongoing monitoring of progress. And then within 30 school days of a screening result that is significantly below relevant benchmarks, the school shall inform the student's parent or guardian of the screening results and the school's response and shall offer them an opportunity for a follow-up discussion." So knowing that this was coming and in order to be prepared, we purchased a valid screening tool approved by DESI and we trained our staff. We began sharing this information with families last May. We had a parent academy at Central Middle School letting families know that results from fall screening would be sent home beginning in October for students in grades one through three. More recently, we presented at Citywide PTO on January 22nd. And last week on January 29th, we had another parent academy with about 80 participants. So here you see an example of a cover letter that explains what early literacy screening is, why it's important, what the results show for each child and what kinds of instruction are appropriate. Based on the results, all students will continue to benefit from evidence-based reading instruction with tier one core instruction. And in addition, some students will need more strategic or intensive support. So this could be in a small group setting with a literacy specialist or with English learner education, special education, or a combination of all of these. And along with the cover letter, families receive the results of the screening. So this slide shows a sample of results, which is called the M-Class Home Connect Letter. We like these very much because they don't just show the results of each subtest, but they also explain what they are. So for example, in the middle, I know it's small there, you can see there's a little ear icon. So this child has a phonemic awareness score of 49. And it explains that the skill of phonemic awareness is measured by the subtest of phoneme segmentation fluency, which is being able to hear sounds and words. And then you see at the bottom there, it's in bold, but you know, it would be more clear and in color for families. It states that for this skill, a student, for example, would have to identify the first, middle and last sound in sun. And then finally, M-Class also provides examples of how caregivers can help at home. So these suggestions are customized specifically for that child. So the examples there show a household message board. So a, a family can create a message board and leave written notes for their child. A puppet narrator. So after reading a story, they could use a puppet or a favorite stuffed animal or a rabbit with their hand to retell the events of a story. Another one is to create a go fish game using matching pairs of words from words that their children are learning in school. Another example is shopping for sounds. So as you shop, you have your child separate sounds of words or blend them back together. And again, those activities are suggestions that are specific to that, what that child would need at that time. And then, so here you see a slide of why the screening is so important and, and why it needs to be universal for everyone. So it's going to prevent reading difficulties earlier. We are able to collect the data and use it to inform instruction and intervention. QPS chose the M-Class with DIBELS 8, which met all of DESI's required criteria. We've always used DIBELS and the M-Class just made this easier since the scoring is now on a computer and results are instant. Many other screeners did not meet DESI's requirement and weren't approved. So we were fortunate that we, we have this one. So M-Class is the only licensed digital provider of DIBELS. So we can be assured that we have the best, most screening, most efficient screener that's available right now. Like I said, we've always used DIBELS, the dynamic indicators of basic early literacy skills. It is the gold standard based on 30 years of research from the University of Oregon. There are one-minute measures, so it's brief. It's again, in a mobile platform. The results are immediate. The, the reports are robust. And as I mentioned before, there are lessons and activities, not just suggestions for families, but also lessons that teachers can use right away that are customized for their students. Students are grouped based on the skills that they, you know, they may be in like a decoding group. They put them into different groups and there are lessons specific for those students. And so the one-minute measures, the slide here goes a little bit deeper into what those are. So you see the measure on the left and that's the names of all the different subtests. In the box there is the skill that those subtests measure. So alphabetic knowledge, phonemic awareness, alphabetic principle decoding, word recognition, oral reading fluency and accuracy, and reading comprehension. The check marks show which skills are measured at each grade level and at the bottom you can see the amount of time that it takes for each. And so in kindergarten, this slide just goes into specifically what is measured at the kindergarten level, what time of year it's measured. You can see that in kindergarten, the DESI requirement is to screen twice, at least twice a year. We have always done three times per year and so we'll continue to do that. So we're kind of going beyond what the requirement of that regulation is. And the last bullet there, the third bullet down talks about rapid automatized naming skills. That is a potential, that's a predictor of potential, an indicator for dyslexia. So in, you know, you can, it says there you can use objects or letters or number naming and we do both. So we added on another quick measure with numbers in case a student doesn't know their letters just yet. We're not looking for that. In this particular subtest, we're looking for if they are able to rapidly name the things that they already know. So that's what that does. In first grade, you'll see now layered on are more subtests. However, in M-Class, there are gating rules. So we're not adding more assessment here. If they already have some of these skills, they don't need to be measured in them anymore. So, you know, it will start the student off right with what they need and open up another subtest if they're ready. For example, with oral reading fluency, which is like reading a whole passage. If a first grader is ready for that, that test will then open up for them. And finally, in second and third grade, we continue to do oral reading fluency and MAES, which is a comprehension assessment. And, but we still continue to look for decoding of nonsense words because we don't, we want to make sure that we're capturing students that aren't just, and some students are really good at memory, memorizing how words look, but they may still uncover, you know, we have to uncover whether or not they're able to decode those words.
Okay. And so I, I know we've spoken about this many times, but we have an assessment cycle in Quincy Public Schools. It happens at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and then again at the end of the year. So we have what we call ILT meetings, which are integrated learning team meetings that meet together and talk about student results at those three different times a year. And then in between, we progress monitor and we, we do what we call mini ILTs where we meet, we talk about progress. We, we make adjustments to any of the students' interventions or things like that at those, at those different meetings. So during those data meetings, some of the things that happen are the students are assigned to the appropriate level of intervention. So everybody in Quincy Public Schools has access to tier one instruction. You know, we, we keep that time as sacred and so the students are not removed from that instruction. And then for those students who demonstrate some risk, we will identify focus areas for those students and then arrange student groups in terms of tier three or tier two interventions, depending on what the students need. And so then, as I mentioned, the tier one instruction is for all students. So it, it's really important. And I think that Bridgette and her team have done a phenomenal job with selecting CKLA. It's very important that all students have access to high-quality reading instruction. That includes a phonics and a, and a comprehension component to that instruction. And I think CKLA does a really nice job of that with the skills component and the knowledge component to that program. So the tier one, you know, resources that we have, Bridgette has talked about, you know, some of them. But the, the CKLA program, we also use Hegarty phonemic awareness. It's a supplemental program. It can be done in 10 minutes. The teachers love it. The kids love it. It, you know, it doesn't require any writing at all. It's all phonemic awareness. So it's all sounds. Lively Letters is another supplemental program. That's a phonics program that typically is used in pre-kindergarten and kindergarten. And then Handwriting Without Tiers is also another supplemental program that we used up until about second grade. And so the nice thing about CKLA is that it does connect to the M-Class. And so you can see here, based on how a student scores, it will tell the teacher exactly what to do with that student. And it will actually give them lessons and materials to do as, you know, as part of the assessment, as a result of the assessment. And then just in terms of tier three interventions or tier two interventions, we are very fortunate in Quincy. We have access to a lot of interventions thanks to your support over the years. We have a lot of staff trained in Orton-Gillingham, which is an amazing program and something that, you know, we feel very strongly about is definitely needed in our schools. Read Naturally is another program that works on fluency. We've used that for years. The M, the Amplify M-Class has a, has a toolkit that has lessons and different suggestions for teachers. There's Lexia Core 5, which is based on Orton-Gillingham that kids can do at home or in school. And then Hegarty, the, the phonemic awareness program also has more of an intervention program that's a little more scripted, a little more specific for individual student needs. So if a student is struggling with that core program, they can, you know, use the intervention. And so just some other considerations, you know, when we're looking at our students that we're working with and, and decisions that we're making in terms of what are we doing for tier two or tier three? Or, you know, at what point are we referring them for special education, things like that? We do need to consider if the student has had a disrupted education. Are, is the student an English language learner? Are the difficulties that we're seeing, are they present in both native language and English? Did the student experience any delays in developmental milestones? Things like speech delays, things like that can definitely be an indicator, although not always, but sometimes of a student that might have future reading struggles. Have structured reading instruction and intervention been provided? How's the student responding to those things? Are they making the progress that we would like to see? And has the student previously been identified as requiring special education services? So those are all things that the team will, will talk about when they're looking at making recommendations for our services. And here's just a list of resources that we have for families that are on our website and that we've shared with families in the past. And then just to end, you know, just a quote by David Kilpatrick, who is kind of a guru in reading instruction, that efforts to help weaker readers have been geared toward teaching them how to jump more efficiently over the hurdles. It's not about helping children become better and more efficient hurdleers. It is about removing the hurdles from the track before the race even starts. And so that's what we do each and every day. We're trying to remove those barriers so that our kids can have success. And so with that, any questions?
Out of our literacy program, I think you guys have been doing an incredible job and this just sort of expands it and gets to some of the dyslexia that's out there also. And it also gives us some more supports around it. And I love the CKLA, so I hope that when the governor announces or doesn't announce a required curriculum, she considers that as one of them. I thank you very much for this, though. It's a ton of work.
Thank you. Same. Thank you for putting all the time into this to tell us. So we always use DIBELS, but we didn't use DIBELS up to grade three, did we?
Uh, yeah, we, we do DIBELS in grade three.
Okay. So it was, it did go up to that. Okay. All right. So it, so it's not an additional test. It's just, it's just kind of replaced the DIBELS test.
Yes. So it's not, no, it's, it's pretty much the same thing. There's just some more subtests.
Okay.
And we did, we did, we had in the past, we would use DIBELS in grades four and five too, if we needed to, but not for every student.
Okay. So it's not an additional, it just replaced just the DIBELS test basically. Okay. And how, so are any of the grades doing the M-Class and the ELA MAP test?
Yes, grade three and grade two, actually.
So why would the ELA MAP test not be sufficient for those two grades? Why would they need both? Or how do they differ?
So the, the MAP test does do some like foundational skills, but not a lot. And this is, it's a different purpose. So we have to by law administer this screener in order to screen students for potential risk for dyslexia. So the MAP does not do that. The MAP would not qualify as one of those assessments. And this really breaks it down into like, you know, very specific skills that students need or students should have mastered in order to read. You know, it, it could be like substituting letters in a word or being able to identify initial sounds or rhyming. Or, you know, there's a whole bunch of reading nonsense words. The MAP doesn't, doesn't do any of those things.
Okay, that's great. I think it's helpful for, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Sorry.
Also, this gives the teacher an opportunity to hear their student read. So the MAP is just a computer-based test, which is, you know, pretty different. This is really important for the teacher to actually know and score it in a certain way, which, you know, you don't get those opportunities all that much to have that one-on-one time. So it's really important.
That's great. And I really, I'm glad for the, the explanation because I get, again, kind of what we talked about at our last meeting. There's a lot of testing and these are younger kids. And I think that it's really important that parents know why we have. there's a lot of testing and these are younger kids, and I think that it's really important that parents know why we have both, right? And what, what the goal of both is and why we can't just use one or the other. So I think that's great that you explained it, thank you. And then how do we, just one last question, how do we assess whether the difficulties are present in both the native language and in English? If, do we, do we have to consult with, you know, one of our family liaisons for that? Or how, how do we know that it's present in their native language as well?
So there's multiple ways we do that, one is we, you know, central registration is really great. They have a kind of a, I guess I would call it like a social assessment that they fill out with families. And that's one of the questions that they ask, has your child had, had any learning struggles in their native language? And so sometimes we'll get information from that, the family will report, oh yeah, you know, they, they struggled in this way. You know, learning to read or write or whatever the case may be. But then in addition, if we need to, we can give an assessment in a native language with a translator. So sometimes we will do that if, if we're very concerned. A lot of times, parents can, will tell you that, you know, like that, they'll tell central registration or they'll tell the school that they struggled in, you know, in their home country too.
Okay, thank you. All set? Okay, anyone else? That's great, okay, thank you, thank you so, oh, Amy, do you have a question?
Are there options to retake the test if you have like one bad day?
You had a bad day?
Yeah, so, so the Dibbles is, oh, the M-Class is a screening tool, so it's like taking a temperature. It's not really like a, a test that, you know, we really, it's really just so that teachers can see, you know, what they've done and where they need to go next with a student. So there really isn't like this kind of pressure to do well. And if a student doesn't do well, we monitor their progress. So if a student is, is, we didn't get into that too much, but if a student is well below that benchmark score, then in a couple of weeks, just with that particular subtest that they may not have done well with, that teacher will work with that in a particular intervention and then just do that one test again.
Okay, so it's not like they're stuck forever with-
No, no.
Thank you.